Well, good morning. We'll get started with our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm gonna have Councilman Pat Ryan lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. For the invocation, we have a kind of a special performance today. Reverend George Bach is retiring at St. Paul's Cathedral after 28 years. And I know there are some people from the congregation here. Would you all stand so we can show that Reverend Bach is not here by himself today? Thank you all for coming. Reverend Bach, if you would lead us in the invocation, if everyone would please stand.
I'd like to begin by quoting some words from the Book of Psalms. "There is a river whose streams make glad the city of God, the holy habitation of the Most High. God is in the midst of the city; it shall not be moved; God will help it when the morning dawns. Glorious things are spoken of you, O city of God. Singers and dancers alike say, 'All my fresh springs are in you.'" Let us pray. O Lord of the dance and Lord of the song, we thank you for the many fresh springs that flow forth from the heart of our city. We thank you for our vitality, energy, and prosperity. We thank you for all who risk their lives daily for the safety and welfare of our citizens. Remember those who it is so easy to forget, those upon our streets, those searching, those lost, those seeking help and assistance. We especially remember members of our community today that are struggling with the hail damage. Help us to see our way toward the city of God. There's a way that balances peace and justice, truth and mercy, righteousness and graciousness. Watch over this assembly; guide the hearts and minds. All this we ask in the presence of the one who has invited us to citizenship in heaven. It was taught us that our eternal citizenship begins where a heavenly Father's will is done on earth. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, may I just say a word about our invicator this morning as you're going to the front? George Bach came to St. Paul's 28 years ago. It was about the time, right at the time or right after the time of the Penn Square Bank failure. A time that the church and many other churches, downtown churches, were thinking about whether they'd stay in the downtown area. And I know that wasn't the only time in the 28 years that the church struggled with whether to stay in the downtown area or move out. And this church truly, under George Bach's leadership, has stayed committed to the downtown area of Oklahoma City in its mission and many of its other activities. Some years ago, when the church that used to host the Martin Luther King Parade gave that up, St. Paul's welcomed that activity and has been the host for the Martin Luther King Parade and celebration for some years. But it's also been an activity center for many ecumenical gatherings over the years under his leadership. I think truly, it's a church that we can say that has a heart and has maintained and continued that heart under his leadership. And the wonderful people that are here, a heart and the heart of the city. And we have much to be thankful for this church and Georgia's leadership. Thank you so very much.
Well put, Sam. And we have a citation for Reverend Beck. Reverend Beck, would you come up and stand? Why don't we just bring up, I know there are 10 or 12 members of the congregation. Why don't you come up and stand behind Reverend Beck here to show a show of support as the clerk reads the citation and we get settled.
Whereas after 28 years as Dean of St. Paul's Cathedral in downtown Oklahoma City, the very Reverend George H.A. Bach has announced his retirement. And whereas George Bach was born in New York City and is a graduate of Bard College and the General Theological Seminary. Whereas he served as curate at St. John's Church of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, rector of Christ Memorial Church of North Brookfield, Massachusetts, and canon pastor of the Cathedral Church of St. Luke in Orlando, Florida. Whereas the very Reverend Bach came to Oklahoma City in 1982 to serve as dean of St. Paul's Cathedral and historic edifice located on the corner of Northwest 7th Street and Robinson Avenue since 1904. Whereas over the past 28 years, Dean Bach has seen the cathedral survive urban blight and the bombing of the Alfred P. Morel Federal Building in 1995. Whereas during the days following the bombing, besides serving as a spiritual sanctuary for those seeking comfort and peace, Dean Bach opened St. Paul's to serve as a triage site for the injured and to feed many rescue workers who were searching for victims through the night. Whereas under Dean's leadership, the cathedral has expanded its campus 100 percent, quadrupled regular Sunday attendance, and established the cathedral's endowment. Whereas Dean Bach's ministry has brought to life the cathedral mission of being a presence in downtown Oklahoma City by providing emergency assistance to 4,580 families a year through the Guild of St. George, providing space for AA meetings, conducting community music programs, and serving as a site of the opening ceremony for the annual Martin Luther King Junior Parade. And whereas Dean Bach will be greatly missed by his congregation and by the community as comforted, encouraged, and enriched. Now therefore Mick Cornett, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby commend the very Reverend George H.A. Bach for his many years of dedicated service as a spiritual leader in our community and wishes him all the best in his retirement.
Let's show our appreciation.
I thank you very much. And I still, after 28 years, I know it sounds strange, like I came from somewhere else. But I've been so welcomed here in Oklahoma, become a born-again Southerner, and I just feel that so at home in the midst of this community. And I do indeed thank my congregation and all the city for the warm welcome I received and still I receive. Thank you.
You're welcome. I guess we didn't get him to change his mind, but let's send him off with our best wishes. Thanks very much, Reverend. All right, it is time to fill the boot. Our Fill the Boot campaign is just around the corner. I know Mark Woodard and Andrea Pope are here. Would you all come forward? We have a proclamation. And Phil Seip is here also, representing the firefighters. And Andrea has been designated as the spokesperson for this effort. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it, and then I'll hand you the microphone. You can tell people why we should all fill the boot. Okay?
Whereas the Oklahoma City Professional Firefighters Association, Local 157, is hosting the annual Fill the Boot campaign to benefit the Muscular Dystrophy Association, MDA. Whereas the firefighters have partnered with the MDA since 1954 and freely give their time to fill the boot and other MDA campaigns throughout the year. Whereas over the past 10 years, donations collected by firefighters with Fill the Boot have exceeded $1 million, and the state record was broken in 2009 by Oklahoma City residents generously responding to Fill the Boot with over $235,000. And whereas these donations support continued research into the neuromuscular diseases and help over 2,000 families in Oklahoma with critical medical services and supplies for loved ones affected by these diseases. Now therefore Mick Cornett, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through 24 as firefighter Fill the Boot Week in Oklahoma City, and he encourages all citizens to support this worthwhile cause.
Let's show our appreciation to the citizens of Oklahoma City and the firefighters.
Thank you so much for allowing us to fill the boot on the street corners. And it truly is an honor to work with the Local 157 and the Oklahoma City Fire Department. They do a great job for all of our client families every year. And thank you to the city council for allowing us to do this every year.
And when should we expect to see the firefighters?
Starting tomorrow through the 24th.
Starting tomorrow through the 24th.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Let's get generously and let's break that record.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have a proclamation about Bike to Work Day. Looks like we have a big group here. Sarah Welch, John Sharp, Ryan Billings, Pete Kramer, Hal McKnight, and our Oklahoma City Police Department officers who are riding the four-wheeled vehicles. Come on forward. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it, and we'll get settled.
Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans. Whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling as a viable, environmentally-friendly form of transportation, an excellent form of exercise, and a great recreational activity for individuals and families. Whereas educating cyclists and motorists as to proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensuring the safety and comfort of all users. This activity will promote a healthy lifestyle that lends itself to a healthy community. Whereas the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, ACOG, Oklahoma City Police Bike Patrol Unit, Oklahoma State Department of Health, Metro Technology Centers, OU Health Science Center, Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, local bicycling clubs and groups and bicycle shops throughout Oklahoma City are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities for all. Whereas the 2030 OakHarts Plan adopted by ACOG promotes development of multimodal transportation facilities along with the Oklahoma City's Bicycle Transportation Plan will set the groundwork for future bicycle facility development. Now therefore Mick Cornett, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim Friday, May 21st, as Bike to Work Day, and encourages all Oklahoma City residents to always wear a helmet when riding a bicycle and to recognize the importance of bicycle safety and to be more aware of cyclists on our city streets.
All right, let's show our appreciation to these enthusiasts. And a reminder that with the passage of Maps III, the number of bicycle trail miles in our city is going to more than double. So we have a lot to look forward to. And we do want people to bike to work this Friday, if it's at all, an opportunity for them. We'd love to see a lot of cyclists out. So thank you again. All right, next, we have a resolution honoring our latest group of state champions. Let's bring up the Douglas High School Trojans. Come on up, everybody. All right. Fourth state title for Douglas High School? That's more than your share, I hope you guys know. We've got a resolution. I'll have the clerk to read it. Everybody scrunched together here for the photographers. And as the clerk reads it, we'll get settled.
Whereas the Trojans of Douglas High School won the 2009-10 state class 4A Boys Basketball Championship on March 13th, 2010 by defeating Bishop McGinnis, 86 to 51. Whereas Coach Terry Long guided his team to completing their first unbeaten season and capturing the fourth state title for the Douglas basketball program after a 20-year drought. Their previous titles came in 1989, 1986, and 1984. Whereas Douglas made it to the championship game with victories over Woodward, 78 to 66, and McLean, 79 to 49. Whereas it is noteworthy that the team is made up of 11 juniors, a sophomore, and a freshman. As such a young team, their talents and team unity will only improve. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby commend and congratulate the Trojans of Douglas High School on winning the 2009 to 10 state class 4A Boys Basketball Championship.
Now that's not all there is to it, though, guys. We have to get a motion in a second here. And Skip, I just saw you slip in. You wanna make a motion for?
I got the motion.
All right. We have a motion.
I think I got some votes.
All right, now we have to see if we can get five votes for you guys up there to make this a fit. It's unanimous. How about that? Now we can show our appreciation. Okay, congratulations. I noticed by adding up the three victories, you guys won by 77 points, and you're doing that with a team that's not loaded with seniors. So good luck to the Trojans.
Thank you. We consider it an honor, Mr. Mayor, and to the city council, for inviting us. We also plan to be back next year, if all underclassmen. Just a little bit pressure on my guys and coaching staff, but definitely Douglas High School and Dr. Staple's considered us an honor, and we thank you.
You know you guys have gotta work twice as hard next year, because everybody's gonna come after you. Devante, you wanna introduce the rest of the team?
I would like to introduce Frederick A. Douglas, Boys Basketball Team 4A Champion. Marquise Buxton Hill, Tashawn Drake, Dorian Williams, Ramon Jenkins, Dominique Manuel, Danilo Clark, and Stephen Clark.
Let's show our appreciation, and good luck, guys. There you go.
Mayor, I would like to say something. First of all, again, I want to personally congratulate each one of you young men. And as I watch you all play in the national championship, it's obvious that we're not gonna have this coaching staff very long, because what they have been able to do, I'm sure colleges are looking at them, and it won't be long before they'll probably be in the college ranks and probably in the pro ranks. And each one of you, from what I saw, have a guaranteed future in the college ranks and professional, if you keep the skills that you're presently displaying and the character that I saw. You know, you see a lot nowadays that you get a lot of negative about young people, but I want to tell you from the deepest part of my heart that I saw one of the best performances of character. You know, your skills was natural in some respect, but the character that you displayed out there on that floor, the night that you all won the national championship, I was just almost in tears. And I didn't go to Douglas, but I have such a high regard for the Douglas Trojans because of merit to one, for 39 years. So I want you all to know that I have a lot of knowledge about Douglas, and you all have just done a great job of escalating the honor of the Douglas Trojans and the history of Douglas Trojans. And so I just want to personally say thank you and keep up the good work. And whatever you're doing right now, continue to do it. And that is, you're taking great guidance from your parents, you're taking great instructions and listening to your coaches and your teaching staff at Douglas High School. And for all the coaches and the teaching staff at Douglas, you all are to be commended because this is a historical mark for Douglas High School. And so for the first time, for a team to go totally undefeated all year long and win the national state championships, you know, you all have made history, and the rest of the nation is clearly looking at these players. And I just hope you stay focused and continue to do what you do so we can read about you, you know, years after this in different ranks of success. So thank you.
Yeah, we're really proud of you guys. Thanks very much. It's like they're heading back to school. The Paseo Arts Festival is just around the corner. Lori, I know you have a picture you'd like to present. Just step to the microphone.
Good morning. Karen Orr with the Paseo Arts Association. I know you all have seen me here before. And our 34th Annual Arts Festival will take place May 29th, 30th, and 31st. The hours are 10 to 8 for the art, and the music will go until 11:00 PM, except for Monday, we kind of close down about 6:00. We have an expanded children's area this year. We've got some art educators involved and some great volunteers. We host about 50,000 to 70,000 people over the weekend, and it's just a great opportunity to come out and have fun, bring the dogs, the kids, you know. It's just a great family event for that weekend. And we have, we'd really like to thank the city council and Sam Bowman in particular for helping, helping get through some changes that needed to take place down there that will continue to preserve the festival in the future. And earlier today, we presented Mayor Cornett in his office with a copy of the poster for this year. And this time, we would like to present one to Sam Bowman. Sam? This is the poster for this year. I'd love the audience to see it. This will be on all the t-shirts, all the signage, the banners. We have some fine art posters that will be for sale during the festival. So Winnie Hawkins was our artist this year. She did a nice graphic piece for us. So we'd like to thank everybody, and we hope we can see each and every one of you out there to enjoy the festival this year.
And for those who might not know, the Paseo District is located?
It runs from Northwest 30th and Dewey down to Northwest 28th and Walker.
Okay.
Just kind of does a little jog off to the side, but yes.
And is there any website information that people might be able to get?
The Paseo.com gives you the music schedule, the artists that are going to be there. We have award-winning and nationally recognized artists that will be there this year. We have over 80 artists this year. And like I said, the expanded will have two different areas. The children's theater group will be in front of theater up on the Stardance Swan. And then down in the triangle area is going to be the children's art area. We'll be doing sock puppets this year, I believe. They'll be able to make vessels with clay, and I believe there's going to be some paint involved. So if you don't want paint on your clothes, stay away from that area.
It's Saturday, Sunday, and Monday Memorial Day weekend.
Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Not this weekend, but next weekend.
Correct.
Thank you all very much for coming down. Let's show our appreciation again to the Paseo Arts community.
Mayor, Karen and Lori, thank you for the compliment, but truly, this council together struggled with everyone to make this through this year. Let's just make it the biggest and the best ever. Thank you.
All right. We're on item 3A of the agenda. We had hoped to have the Putnam City Pirates Boys Basketball Team in. They were unable to make it today, but we still need to go ahead and pass the resolution. Gary, that's in, much of it's in Ward 1. All right? And cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. We have already voted on item 3B, so that leads us to item 4, which is the Journal of Council Proceedings. I'll ask for a motion on item A and B. It's to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for May 4th and 11th, and to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for April 27th.
Who can I?
Second. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, there's several this morning, starting on page 29. Page 29, item 8B, SP 415, the applicant has requested that this item be deferred until June 1st. Again, that's item 8B. On page 31, 8I1 and 2, the electrical code, staffs requested that we strike that from the agenda. We're gonna work with some of the stakeholders on that.
Which one was that?
Item 8I1 and 2 on page 31.
Okay.
And then on to page 32, under item 8L1, item A6520 North Bryant, we asked that be stricken, will rework as property maintenance. 3345 Northeast 12th Street, we asked that be stricken. The owner has removed. Item L317 Northwest 23rd Street, we asked that be stricken. The owner has removed. Item M325 Southwest 23rd Street, we asked that be stricken. The owner has removed. Item N327 Southwest 23rd Street, we asked that be stricken. The owner has removed. Under item 8M1A3505 North Ann Arbor, we asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item D6520 North Bryant, we asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item H3917 West Liberty, we asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. On to page 33, item M3345 Northeast 12th Street, we asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item N901 Southeast 14th, we asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item Q316 Southwest 23rd Street, we asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item R2439 Southwest 29th Street, we asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item S117 Southwest 27th Street, we asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item T4621 Northwest 33rd Terrace, we asked that be stricken to rework for additional violations. Item W3260 Southwest 47th, we asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item X2617 Southwest 79th Street, we asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item Z8304 Northwest 116th Street, we asked that be stricken. We're gonna rework that for additional violations. I think the notices do work.
Well, they've got a lot of progress. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll reset the council meeting convened as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
Second.
All right, looks like there are five items here, and I'll draw your attention to the amendment to the Council of General. Francis, will we be able to vote this one in on the same motion?
Yes.
Did everyone get the amendment? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a, do we get a second?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody ready to vote on the MFA?
I have a question, Your Honor, please.
All right, sure.
On C1. There may be a typo in here or something I need to have a little explanation on. On the background, third paragraph, the claimant was evaluated and found to have 0% permanent partial impairment. And then in the negotiated settlement, we fall for 10%, and I was wondering what the basis for that might be if it wasn't a typo.
It was judgment by the court, Mr. Ryan, and yes, it was determined that there would be zero permanent partial, but there was an injury that occurred.
Injury, I understand. I'm not denying that we take care of people with injuries, but having this in the record seems to me a little bit misleading. We had zero, a doctor said he wasn't impaired.
No, he wasn't permanently injured.
Okay, but we had a lump sum that resulted, that was based on permanent partial disability.
And again, Mr. Ryan, all I can tell you is that was the award of the court.
Okay. I thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the MFA before we vote? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are 10 items. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. There's one item. Checking. Any comments or questions on the OCEAT? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any individual considerations?
Just a second.
I just have a comment to make.
All right. Brian, did you have anything?
Item 8A-G, it's the...
AG?
AG.
Okay. Meg? AH for Sam. AL. Skip, did you have a comment?
Well, I thought I did.
Okay. Claire?
AH also, Mayor.
Okay.
Your Honor, BO.
BO, okay. All right, Brian, you want to get started with AG?
I would just like maybe a clarification on what Employment Land Needs Assessment and Action Plan is.
Russell?
Employment lands is land that we're trying to delineate that is for either industrial use or for development, for anything that's going to generate jobs, basically. So, it could be something like a Dell, it could be something like a regular industrial manufacturing.
We've had problems identifying industrial tracks for large companies that want to come in because of it's too close to schools, it's too close to environmental way, too close to the airport, those type of things. And so, we've been having problems with some of our recruitment processes. But we got a grant from the federal government, and with that, we're looking at going back and trying to identify some additional areas or how to act, to put some tracks together so they can be large enough and we can have some marketable industrial tracks.
So, this is paid for with federal money?
We've got a match to it, but most of it is.
Just this point might be helpful. The Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust was involved in this process, and the trust is putting up $50,000, part of the funds for the project.
All right, AH. Sam, you want to go first, and I think Larry wants to comment on it, too.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, there are eight neighborhoods, and I think most or maybe all of them are represented here today, that are being recommended for neighborhood improvement project awards from CDBG funds. I'd just like to ask those that are here to stand. We have River Park, Central Park, College Hill, North Highland Estates Park, Douglas Edgemere, Chisholm Creek College Park, John F. Kennedy, and West Lawn Gardens. These are eight neighborhood improvement projects, again, funded with CDBG funds for low and moderate income neighborhoods. Mayor, there were 13 applications this go-around for these funds, for these eight awards. There are a variety of improvements, park improvements, entry sign improvements, crime awareness program, identity signs, landscaping, all with a great degree of planning and sweat equity on behalf of these neighborhoods. And I just want to say, we applaud you and congratulate you as you work to make your neighborhoods stronger and healthier. We know that our city becomes stronger and healthier. So, congratulations to all of you.
In reference to that, I would like to also add that there are a lot of several neighborhoods that were not granted a grant, and I want them to know that as we go forward in the continuation of these programs, that we will be looking at a difference way, a different way of grading. I think that there were some neighborhood associations that clearly should have been awarded a grant. I applaud those individuals who did receive the grant, but I just want for those neighborhoods that are listening to understand that I will continue to advocate and to fight for a clear way of being able to look at the totality of the efforts in the community and use those as benchmarks to see that they get, you know, a fair, you know, consideration in reference to the future grants. And so, I just want for those individuals who did receive your grant, I want to applaud you for the work that you do in your community. I just want everyone to know that I think there are many other organizations that are doing the same thing, that in reference to the way that this was done, they didn't get a fair chance in reference to receiving the grant. And I want, you know, everyone to know that, you know, things may change in the future, and we applaud neighborhood involvement and citizens' involvement, but I just think that there were some neighborhoods that didn't get, you know, a just consideration of the awards.
All right. You all can sit down. Thank you very much for your input. Larry, did you want to?
Yeah, with Amy and Mayan, Amy, Mayan and Edson just kind of raised their hand back there. Okay. From River Park, they talked about sweat equity, and I just wanted to recognize River Park. This past weekend, I got notice late last night from Gina Daniel from River Park, that they had a very successful Bow-a-thon to raise funds. Those funds are going to be used to buy supplies, to rehab houses. The labor is being supplied by Catholic youth from all over the country. And so, while this grant is just one example of what is going on in River Park, and thank you, and I think, Amy, you were mainly responsible for preparing the grant document, from what I understand, and congratulations, and keep up the good work. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet, Larry. Thank you.
Mayor, could I just also, I'm Ward 6, I've got Capitol Hill here. I saw Mary Sosa. Mary, would you wave your hand? And I think Claudia is here with you. And at West Lawn Gardens, we have Chanel Hempel here, and really, I'm proud of the work that you all are doing as well. I would like to echo Skip's comments to an extent. I know that, I think this was the first time we had more people apply for the dollars than we had dollars available to grant, and I want to encourage all of those neighborhoods that did apply to reapply and keep up the efforts to improve their neighborhoods as well.
All right, yes. Congratulations. All right, Sam, did you want to talk about AL?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a very timely award of bids today for the first 70 miles of construction to begin in July, on the first 70 miles of the on-street bike marked bike lanes. Very appropriate to the earlier recognition of our Bike to Work Day this Friday, and we will be able to stand and tell that group Friday morning that we look forward to the beginning of the construction of the first 70 of, I think, 300 miles in our master plan of on-street marked lane, bicycle lane. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh huh. Thanks, Sam. Pat, you want to talk about BO?
Just a quick question, Your Honor. This is a budget for the River, excuse me, the Riverfront Redevelopment Authority, and in the expenditures column, there is an item called transfers, and this continues to grow. This year is $212,000. I wonder where that money's, where is it transferred? Is there some kind of capital improvements?
It is in a reserve account.
Reserve account. And what is the reserve account now? How much is it?
It's several hundred thousand dollars. I don't remember specifically. It's less than a million. I think it's around $400,000 or $500,000.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket?
AO, if I could get an explanation as to the, is this not extending the contract at the present time? G3 services? AO?
Looks like we're extending the time of contract award and awarding the contract.
I'm sorry, Councilman, I didn't, I didn't hear your question.
I was trying to get a clarification if on AO, is, are we awarding the contract now, or are we not awarding the contract?
Yes, yeah, we need to extend the time, and we're also awarding. Yes, we're awarding the contract.
So, city-owned properties, is any particular, I mean...
Detention ponds, things like that. The big regional detention ponds that the city owns and maintains.
And parts don't control those?
No.
Okay. Then my other one, Dennis, I think this may be yours, is AW at Northeast 10th and Frederick Douglas Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell me exactly what this?
We did a bond-issue project on a tributary of Lightning Creek a couple of years back, and we were required to mitigate, and by removing the wetlands that were removed in that project, we had to put them someplace else and guarantee that they would be maintained as a wetland area, and the location is a part of the Jimmy Stewart Golf Course. And so, this is just a perpetual easement to guarantee that those, that area will remain as it is now.
This is just east of the golf course?
I can't tell you the exact location on the golf course. I'll be glad to get that information for you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, ready to vote the consent docket? Yeah, Meg?
I just have one general sort of observation and request. Many of the items in this consent docket are pricing renewals or pricing agreements, and I guess I would just encourage all the staff, as you're talking to your vendors and things, see if maybe we can't cut some slightly better deals than we have. We're all facing budget challenges, and if our vendors and suppliers and services would help us during this period, it would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, Larry?
Still on that line. I don't know if Laura Johnson is here or not. She was here earlier. She was very successful. One of the items on there, Meg, was next year's audit, and she was successful in negotiating with the auditor a more favorable price. So, at least Laura is doing that, and I hope the others are also.
Good work. All right, let's vote the consent docket. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're out of the concurrence docket. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the concurrence docket?
Mayor, just a question on R. It's the June 11/13 National Drag Boat Races down near Dell that were held last year. My question is, are there any different arrangements, City Manager, for parking, and are we talking with Dell about any potential shared parking arrangements at their facility?
Dell is much more in the loop this year. I think Councilman Mars may know more about this than I do.
All right. Well, yes, they are. They have, after watching the event last year, understand the impact of it and what it does, and their fears have been alive. So, yes, they've offered up their parking lot and the field that's next to them.
And I don't have the...
All right, any other comments on the concurrence docket? All right, cast your votes.
Wait a minute, Mayor.
Passed unanimously. Too late. It was a good distraction. Meg did him talking, and we passed it when he wasn't looking.
And I don't even have a dog.
What, which item did you want to talk about? All right, move on. Item 8, these are items require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is an ABC3 issue that's in Ward 6. The address is 2321 South Robinson. Meg?
Is there anyone here today to speak to this? And are you the club operator?
Yes.
Owner? Okay. Why don't you tell us a little bit about what your plans are?
My name is Jerry Rodriguez, and we are currently a beer bar, and we want to expand our menu. We want, we're applying for an ABC3 to be able to serve liquor, and that's where we're at.
Will this, will you be serving food as well?
We have packaged food right now.
Okay. Bob, I understand that the Planning Commission has approved this application. There were some protests.
That's correct. There's a row of C3-zoned houses, just kind of to the, be the southwest, but I don't believe any of them appear.
I don't see anybody here. And I drove the area over the weekend, actually, a number of times, and it is a commercial district that the facility has been operating, it appears, for a number of years.
That's correct.
And I haven't heard any complaints from the neighborhood about issues, and so, I would go ahead and move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8A1. Any other comments or questions from anyone in the room? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
We're on item 8A2. This is another ABC issue. This one's in Ward 2. The address is 5825 Northwest Graham Boulevard. Sam?
Mayor, I believe this is Cafe 501 be operating here. There are no protests at the Planning Commission. Are there any here today in opposition to this? I would move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on item 8A2? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A3 is an ABC issue in Ward 1. The address is 3100 North Portland. Gary? Do we have anybody here to speak on this?
Yes, sir.
My name is David DeWitt. I'm the current owner.
You're the applicant?
I am the applicant.
Tell me a little bit about this. What are you going to do?
It's my second game room, a restaurant. I've been in operation 13 years on the south side of Oklahoma City. The property came up for rent about five months ago. I took rent on it, total of 10,000 square foot. I'll be occupying 7,500 square foot, with 25, roughly 2,000 square foot is actual restaurant sitting area with the rest. I've been occupied with pool tables. Intent is to have a Hispanic restaurant and game room.
Okay. The, I have a real concern about this ABC. This shopping center, this plaza on Portland, has not been a very good neighbor to the neighborhoods for a long time. Numerous complaints, a lot of issues with the bars that are there. They come and go fairly frequently, it seems like. I have a real concern about putting another facility in this area that serves alcohol. I know that, that the residents have a lot of concerns there, too. I asked, after it came through planning, I asked the police department to look into this, and I believe we have somebody here that I'd like to get to speak on this. The south side location that you have, you mentioned you've been there how long?
13 years.
You ever had any problems down there?
None. Zero.
No problems at all?
None.
Do you have all the license and permits you need for that?
Of course.
Okay. All right, I'd like to ask the gentleman from the police department, come up, talk about the...
Gary, he's on his way. What is the address of your other location?
940 Southwest 59th. It's actually 940, 942, and 944, all combined, it are 940.
Do you plan on serving food here?
Of course. Full restaurant, full menu.
Full restaurant?
Yes.
My name's Doug Kimberlin. I'm the vice lieutenant, and one of the things we're charged with is the investigation and background checks for licensees. On the 26th of April, I received an inquiry from J.J. Chambliss and Planning, wanting to know some of the calls for service at the south side location, 940 Southwest 59th, with regards to the Q Palace and the licensee, DeWitt &amp; Sanders LLC, Mr. DeWitt. That was provided to them. A couple days later, I then received a county beverage permit from the Oklahoma County Court Clerk with reference to 3100 North Portland, which is his current licensee request. After going out and conducting a site visit, and with some prior knowledge on another pool hall that I had previously protested due to its close proximity to a church, I prepared and executed an affidavit and presented it to the district attorney's office. Due to the proximity of this licensee application to a church located in the same, in the same complex, it is within 300 feet, which is prohibited by state law. We, one of the things I presented at the district attorney's office was the fact that even though it says that it's going to be a pool hall and possibly a Mexican restaurant, there is no application under Title 44 for a pool hall license, which leads me to believe that the main purpose of the event or the licensee will be the service of low-point beer, which then invokes Title 37163 and the 300-foot rule. then invokes Title 37163 and the 300-foot rule. I also did a search on the 940 Southwest 29th Street and found...
59th.
Now, these are just reports that were made, not calls for service. But about nine reports that were made on various crimes since February 4th, 2009. And that would include a patron arrested for two traffic warrants on the 4th of February, assault with a deadly weapon where a group of Hispanic males were firing shots fired outside. One was an incorrect address. One was for the sale of cocaine hydrochloride or cocaine inside the business. A robbery of an individual in the parking lot of the business. Public drunk inside the business. Assault and battery with a deadly weapon, which was a stabbing at the business. Narcotics found inside the business. And then, most recently, on 21 of 2010, young males fighting and arguing outside the business, which resulted in damage to the front of the window. I also checked licenses that have been applied for by David DeWitt or DeWitt &amp; Sanders LLC and found they do not have a valid pool hall license issued by the Court Clerk of Oklahoma County under Title 44, Section 1102, which is required. The protest on the current county beverage permit was accepted by the Oklahoma District Attorney's Office. It's currently set for May 3rd, 2010, at 2:00 p.m. in front of Judge Parrish. I also pulled to kind of figure out if the crimes were out of sync with what we're currently seeing at pool halls. I pulled two last night for Slick Willie's Pool Hall, which everybody should be familiar with, one on West Reno and the location on Northwest Highway. Of those, since January 1st, 2010, on Northwest Highway, there have been nine reports made, one involving the business, which was unauthorized use of a credit card, where a credit card was stolen from the bartender on Northwest Highway. There was nine reports made at that address, most of which are all the burglaries. But there's one involving the business, which was an assault and battery that took place in the parking lot.
You can see why I have a concern not only about this area that we've had problems with before, but about this operation. You understand he can't find a permit for your 89th Street location? You said you had one.
I'm not sure what permit he's talking about, but I have every permit that's ever been required of me. If there's another I'm supposed to get, I've been there 13 years. I'm not aware of any permit that I'm lacking at that property. I would like to mention that the properties that he's talking, I have a bar on either side of me at 940 Southwest 59th that are notorious for the crimes he's talking about, which are what happened there. I'm the one that arranged the cocaine bust next door to me. There was a lot of traffic going back and forth. I know several of the police officers in Santa Fe Division. I contacted them, made them aware of it, vehicle descriptions, what have you, for that arrest. And that took place next door, wasn't at my property. The stabbing I'm very aware of was next door, on the corner of Klein and 59th. It wasn't my property. I did have a window broke out by some juvenile males that threw a bottle through it. But the majority of what you spoke about is on the bar that's located to the west of me at 940 Southwest 59th. And again, I'm not sure what permit you're talking about at my 940 Southwest 59th address. I've got all the permits that I've ever been required to have.
Was there anybody else signed up to speak on this?
No one has signed up.
Anything else you'd like to say before I make a motion?
Just one quick, I've had several phone calls from different people and concerns that it's going to be a bar. I submitted a... At the first meeting, I brought my cook, Rosa. We supplied the menu. Our intent is to be a Hispanic restaurant. I found the building, so I was going to go buy the restaurant equipment and add it at South Side. And I found that I could get all the belongings for the same price, which is why I moved over there. But it's to do a restaurant. I've put $100,000 in that building to make it a restaurant. That is my intent. That is what I'm going to do, if permitted.
I make motion to deny the application.
Any comments or questions from council?
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Why would you put $110,000 into a building before you had approval to operate for what you say you want to operate?
Hindsight, it wouldn't be smart. I didn't feel it would be a problem. I didn't know I was going to be liable for the previous tenants and what had occurred in that area. Sinage, things of that nature, preparing for the restaurant. Several of the equipment had to be rebought, fixed. I've got signs put up, radio advertisement for the last three months. It was a business venture. I feel I'm going to be very successful if permitted.
And so you invested all of that...
I did.
Before there was any approval from...
Once I got the zoning...
...the Department and zoning for the business, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to deny, so a yes vote is to deny the application. Any other comments or questions from council? All right, cast your votes. The application is denied unanimously. Item eight, A4, is a zoning case in Ward seven. The address is 6415 North Kelly Avenue. It's currently C-three community commercial. It would become a simplified plan unit development. Skip?
Yes. Is there anyone, or the owner or representative for the owner here? Counsel?
Good morning, counsel. Being dies with commercial permits exception.
Can you give me, I looked at this and I talked to staff. At this location, there's presently a automotive shop there, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And are these the same, is this the same owner that's been there for, you know, years back?
The gentleman that owns the property is not the person that has the automotive shop leased. Automotive shop is leased.
So it's the owner that's asking for the variance? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, one of the things that gets my attention, and that is because we have tried to address some areas as it relates to outdoor automotive repairs. And this one, of course, is in a very kind of unique situation because there is a residential development that's just to the west and also right to the north.
Yes, sir. I met with the homeowners association out there, and they agreed to everything as long as the site proof fence was put up. And they've also, in the TEs that we agreed to, it states that those cars will not be parked that close to the street in front on Kelly and also on 64th Street.
Right.
Trying to prevent all that. The owner wants to prevent it as well. So I met with them on that, and they agreed to everything.
But the setback is for is the easement, the 10-foot easement?
I believe we have a new easement that we just got signed.
And you have presented it?
Yes, sir.
Is it 10 feet or more?
I thought it was more than that. I don't have a copy of it here in front of me.
It was a 10-foot, additional 10-foot easement, and there is a site triangle provided in there. But they have submitted that as part of the...
So the fence will be to the north?
Well, there's going to be a fence in between there where the auto shop is, there'll be a fence behind it, between it and the residential area. And then the property that faces 63rd, there'll be a fence between it and the houses behind it. In other words, the residential area will have a site proof fence between it and the business.
Okay, okay.
There'll also be a fence provided so that any vehicles that are there for repair will be behind the fence and not sitting out.
Well, the reason why I ask this is because it has been a little bit of an eyesore...
Yes, sir.
...in the past. If you come to 63rd and Kelly, and in any direction, if you're going west, you see it. If you're driving north, you see it. And so I just wanted to make sure that there is an understanding, a clear understanding that they will comply with these conditions if it relates to, first of all, the repairs outside.
There will be no repairing outside. It'll be inside the building.
Okay, all right.
That's one of the TEs.
Right.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And we do totally agree with everything you're saying. Those vehicles were parked way too close to the street. There's more than sufficient amount of room at the back of the actual mechanic shop there, between the mechanic shop and the fence area. There's plenty of room there for all those vehicles to be parked.
Well, one other question. At the present time, the surface there, is it a paved surface?
A portion of it is and a portion of it isn't. On the north side of the mechanic shop there, there's a pretty good sized area that is paved. And then, of course, out in front, between the front of the place and Kelly, there's a pretty good portion there that's paved. But there'll be parking behind the building. If they park behind the building, then they'll have to put down the required paving.
And that wasn't one of the...
That is one of the TEs.
TEs, okay. Thank you, counsel. Move that this be approved?
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item eight, A4. Any other comments or questions from council? All right, cast your votes. Item passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item eight, A5, is a zoning case in Ward four. The address is 115 Southeast 59th Street. It's currently a C-three community commercial district, and it would become a simplified plan unit development.
Is there anyone here, are you the applicant? You might just come down. Is there anyone here other than the applicant to speak on the matter?
It appears to me that the matter was recommended by the Planning Commission, and the only technical evaluation that they had has been deleted.
I don't, unless there's someone here to speak in opposition, I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions on item eight, A5?
I have a question, Your Honor.
All right.
Serving alcohol, will that be only in conjunction with a event or a function there? It won't be open to the public to come in and have a...
No, this is a convention here for waiting receptions. So the clients ask for when the place ask if I can sell wine or margarita. That's what I'm trying to give their...
But it would be only sale during an event at some time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, ready to vote on item eight, A5? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item eight, B, has been deferred until June 1st. Item eight, C, is to close an easement. This is in Ward seven. Skip, you okay with this?
Well, is Mr. Box here? Mr. Box, what is the purpose of this?
Dennis Box, on behalf of the applicant, the purpose is to allow the construction of a office building. And the area in question is not used, will never be used in the future. So the Lincoln is as wide as it's going to be. And what we are going to do is improve the area, place a building on this property. There'll be parking on the area that's shown as vacant on the west side of Beverly Drive.
So the construction will be on the northwest corner of 59th?
No, the construction will be within the area and the area west shown as vacant that you see on your map.
What kind of building are they going to construct there?
It's going to be a mixed use. It's going to be an office, restaurant, three-story building. We've already gone to the Board of Adjustment and got approval. We've coordinated with the, there's a office building shown on the map that is directly west of this property. And that is the Association of County Commissioners. We've coordinated with them, and so we've worked out our parking arrangements. And this will allow us to construct a office building. Then we'll probably have a restaurant on the first floor.
How many stories?
Three.
And this is directly west of the county commissioner's office?
Directly east.
Directly east?
Yeah, it's east, yes.
What kind of arrangement did you say you had with them for parking?
Their parking lot comes directly next to what's shown on the map that you're looking at as vacant. And they had some concerns about leaving existing trees that have been there for 30-plus years.
Right.
So we worked out an agreement where we're going to have a buffer area that even though we're entitled to park, we're not going to park. And we're going to have some areas that we're going to protect some of the existing trees that sit on that vacant parcel. Ray Vaughn was at the meeting, and then the executive director of this group, and so...
And then you're talking about the vacant, east to the west of Beverly?
That's correct.
Okay, and does your client or you're representing, does he own that or control that property?
Yes, sir. That'd be part of this whole project, that's why I mentioned.
And so people will park and have to cross Beverly to get into your office building?
That is correct. There'll be some parking on the site and then some parking across on Beverly Drive.
Move it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Getting ready to vote on item eight, C. Any other comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis.
On item eight, D, this is a public hearing. It updates some language on a CBB issue. I think Gary can answer questions if there are any. Otherwise, Gary, if you want to make a motion? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item eight, E, this updates our maps dealing with flood insurance. Okay, cast your votes on item eight, E. Passed unanimously. Item eight, F, is an issue we discussed briefly a couple of weeks back. We need to come back, revisit this, and discuss an amount. But I think there was consensus that the amount needed to be raised. Does anyone have a recommendation for the amount we'd like to charge?
Mayor, can I make a suggestion? I know Councilman White and maybe Councilman Kelly suggested we... This is the parking...
This is the fine that would go to people who park illegally in their front yard?
In the front, or their yard, residentially.
In their yard, that's correct.
In their yard. But it's currently $10, and there was, staff recommended $50. And I think Mr. White said, you know, we really need to get the message across. And I agree with that. And I think we do need to get the message across. I'd like to think we could get that message across with a consideration maybe of a two-year enactment, that we would enact it this year, and it would be just a two-step process. $50 year this year, $50 this year, get the message out, educate the public, we're serious about this. And a year later, just automatically go to the $100 second step for consideration.
Well, my concern is that I just don't, I can't think of any good reason why we would have a lower fine for doing something that's as damaging to neighborhoods as other communities around us. Midwest City, $105. Moore, $100. Edmond, $100. Well, our fine will be lower than any of them on the list. $65 in Norman, 60 in Tulsa.
I agree. It's just that we're sitting here with a $10 fee now, and those same rates in the other municipalities exist, as we sit at $10. And I'm not disagreeing with this, I just...
You just said $50 this year and $100 the second year and forever until we change it.
Yes. And not that we'd come back and consider it a year from now, it would phase in.
If we put it at $150 at the end of the second year, I think I'd agree with that.
Ken, this is a public hearing today, so we can load on that recommendation to an amendment to it. And then when we bring it back for final hearing, we could, the documents can be presented in that manner.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't, of course, the problem is probably more want of enforcement than it is the cost of it. And, you know, we're down to a situation where it's very difficult for us to enforce it, no matter what the fine is. We don't have the manpower. We're getting ready to lose manpower here in 30 days. So it's probably more want of enforcement than it is the money. But when you look at what the damage it does to people that live around, other people that are willing to park in the front yard, $50 is nothing. Compare what it does to the value of your property, the quality of life in the neighborhood you live in. Compare what it does to the value of your property, the quality of life in the neighborhood you live in. You know, I will tell you a little story about this. When this was originally introduced in 1986, I voted against it. And I voted against it because there are so many yards, so many neighborhoods, so many homes in the area, not so much of what that I represent now, but what was Ward 4, much of which is represented by Councilman Kelly and Councilwoman Salyer now, that have those little tiny narrow driveways that you can hardly get a modern-sized car, well, modern if you have a car like Councilwoman Salyer has, but... But the kind of cars that were available to people in 1986 and through probably 1995, it was very difficult to get one of those on a little driveway that was built for a car that's probably two-thirds that width. And I voted against it because I thought it was an undue burden on people that didn't have the money and didn't have the wherewithal to widen their driveways, or have a, you know, have a one-car garage that was so small you couldn't get your car in it. But it didn't work, I mean, I was, that was 24 years ago, and it didn't work. A $10 fine, and so I should have been on the other side of it, I should have been on the other side arguing it should be more, and we should put more people out there to enforce it, rather than worrying about what was happening to those few people that couldn't afford to widen their neighborhood. Because what's happened is, it's grown, it's a plague. And I, I'm not going to make a test of fellowship about it, but I think it's too little, and I think waiting a year is waiting too long, and I think that I'd have, I'd like it if it went, if we did that, to go to $150 at the end of the second year. I mean, there's got to be a way to get people to realize what they're doing to other people. I mean, it's just, it's a question of the burden you place on the people that live around you. Have I said that three times now? Okay.
Any other thoughts on this, Brian?
Not to negotiate a true share compromise here, but can we do 75 in the first year and 150 in the second year, call it good?
We could, Skip?
Yes, you know, anytime you start talking about assessing a fine or penalty, you know, it's going to strike people in different ways, and, you know, if, you know, the argument from law enforcement is, is that if you're a law-abiding citizen, it shouldn't matter. And, you know, in some respect, you know, when you look at this whole issue, we know that if you drive around certain parts of Oklahoma City, and I don't have to be specific into one particular part, because I think some of this exists all over the city. And the only reason why it exists is people know that there is no one there that's going to enforce any citation ordinance that we have. And if it is $10, and there's really no major, you know, consequences for not even paying the $10, you know, I just feel like that if we're concerned about the growth of this city and the beautification of this city and people's property as it relates to the valuation of what they have invested in, we've got to look at, from the city's perspective, of what our obligation and duty is to those individuals who are law-abiding and taxpaying citizens to keep other individuals from destroying the community in which they live and which they have invested in. And I ask for some numbers, when this came up last week, I've gotten 1,000 calls in reference to this, and every place I've been in the last week, you know, people have come up to me, I've gotten the pros and I've gotten the cons. But, you know, it was really surprising that I've got more calls of individuals who supported Councilman White's comments and my comments in reference to increasing these fees and let people have, you know, the punishment that they deserve as far as a citation if they're going to continue to violate other people's valuation of their property. In 2008, 2009, there were 6,058 citations for front yard parking. In 2009, 2010, that hasn't even got to July, there's 4,077 of these citations that's issued. Now, for $10 only, a citation, I guarantee you that some of these people are repeat offenders. And sometimes you look at this and you're just like, well, you know, if you're living in a $200,000 house, and your next-door neighbor got three kids, and all of a sudden, all three of those cars are on their front yard, and it's like that almost every day, sooner or later, you're going to have a problem with your neighbor. And it truly starts, the first indication of deteriorating the community. And I just believe that if we're going to be serious about what we need to do about our city, let's be real about this issue, let's stop wasting the staff's time of going out writing a $10 citation, and when I look at some of the other citations, and people don't say anything about that for speeding, right now in Oklahoma City, you probably have to pay almost $200 to $300 for a speeding citation. And I know there's a lot of people who are paying that and not saying anything about it. And, you know, when you look at Norman, Moore, Edmond, and Tulsa, and the fines that they have, you know, it just doesn't make any sense for us to sit here, we're supposed to be the biggest city as far as, you know, progress and growth, and we're a $10 citation for front yard parking. And I would propose that, you know, as far as this issue of giving them an education, you know, we don't educate individuals about our speeding citations, you know? We don't educate them about parking in front of a fire hydrant, you know? And if the fire department came in and gave us a report in reference to problems that they have had with people parking in front of fire hydrants and felt like that they needed, that we needed to increase that, I don't think there'd be one person on here that would have any objection about it. And I just feel like that, you know, when we look at all of these fees that we're talking about, you know, the whole issue of a community and a whole issue of the issue of neighborhood, you know, growth, we've got to start, you know, from code enforcement position is respecting them and giving them the authority to do the work that they could do to really make a difference in our city. And I would be willing to do this, I'd be willing to compromise the $75, and if it's not paid within 10 days, then it's $100. And it's just like a parking ticket, you get a parking ticket for $10, and if you don't pay the parking ticket exactly before the 16 days, the parking ticket goes up to almost $25 plus an administrative fee. So the average parking ticket that's not paid could ultimately be a $40 assessment. And I'm just supporting the fact that I want to see some communities cleaned up all over this city, and front yard parking is one of the areas that we need to let people know, you can't come to Oklahoma City and just disrespect the law and the lay-in here as it relates to our communities.
Well, I don't see that we're getting any closer on a number, but we don't have to today. We can bring this up for a final vote next week, we can't vote on it until then, anyway.
June 1st.
June 1st is when we'll be voting on it, so Larry?
I'd just like to make a couple of comments if I could. Since this came up, I commissioned one of my neighborhood leaders to do a survey, an internet survey, and I did not get into all the $50, $75, or not, so I said, what would the neighbors feel about a $100 fine? And it came back four to one, the neighborhood said, "We want the $100 fine to preserve our quality of life." And going around town, as Skip has talked about, I've also asked people in different neighborhoods around, and I've also just used a $100 fine, and I have yet to find anybody who's come back and said, "No, we shouldn't do it." At the, I don't think I'm betraying our confidence here, but I was at a meeting with Georgie Rasko from Neighborhood Alliance last Thursday night, and I said, "Georgie, you have a compassionate heart for people who have economic challenges. We're talking about this $100 fine for neighborhood parking," and wow, I'll tell you, for the next five minutes, I got a lecture on how important it is to prohibit neighborhood, on front yard and all parking in neighborhoods, what it does to the psyche of the neighborhood, what it does to real estate values, what it does to quality of life. And I said, when she got through, I said, "I think you're in favor of it." And she said, you know, 100%. So there's strong sentiment, and the other comment I'd like to make is, I'm in favor of this, and not because it's a revenue generator, but because it's a quality of life issue, and it's not a fee. I hate to take exception to my comrade Skip, but this is a fine for violating a law and should be viewed at that, and people need to abide the law, and it'll help protect the neighborhood quality of life. So if we can come to some meaningful figure, whether it's 75 or $100, let's get on with it.
Okay, Gary?
We can make a motion to amend this for final approval the next time we hear it, is that right?
Yes, on June 1st, when we're going to vote, we can come up with the number then.
The purpose of a public hearing is to let people know what they're going to be finally voting on, and I think we need to, I'd like to see us go ahead and settle an amount today so that if there's great opposition to it, they have time to get that in front of us before we do a final adoption. I'm going to make a motion to amend the proposed ordinance change for the minimum fine to go to 100, and the fine after 10 days to go to 125.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do I have a second? Alright, we have a second. And keep in mind, if this were to fail, we could entertain another motion for a different amount. So if someone has a different amount they'd rather propose, now's the time to kind of bring that up, that you're going to have another motion. Otherwise, we'll vote on Gary's right now. Ready to go? Alright, cast your vote on this motion that's on the floor, and it passes by a count of seven to one. Puts us on to item 8G. There's some alterations in the fee structure for building permits. Any comments or questions on these?
Move the item.
Alright, cast your votes on 8G, passed unanimously. Item 8H clarifies the fee structure for holding events on the river. Comments or questions on item 8H? Alright, cast your votes, passed unanimously. I believe item 8I has been struck, is that right? Alright, then puts us on to item 8J, and Dennis Clowers is going to speak on some of the changes to the drainage ordinance, is Dennis?
Mayor and counsel, these changes affect Chapter 48, which has to do with land disturbing, Chapter 57, which has to do with water resources, and Chapter 60, which has to do with fees. The changes in Chapter 48 are basically updating definitions dealing with land disturbing activity and land disturbance to make it uniform. We're also defining the permit application requirements and procedures. We're also including a lot of language in Chapter 48 that's already in Chapter 57, so it's consistent throughout the code. In Chapter 57, we're establishing a permit duration and enforcement conditions for those permitted facilities, and we're updating the ordinance to comply with the Clean Water Act. In Chapter 60, all we're doing is adding in the fees that we've been charging, plus some additional fees that we would like to see enacted for reapplication and reinspection. I'll be happy to respond to questions.
Comments or questions for Dennis? Alright. We'll motion in a second, we're voting on item 8J, cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 8K, I think Dennis is coming back for a repeat performance on the presentation for the new rate structure for drainage fees.
Mayor and counsel, the item that you have before you is a request to increase the stormwater drainage utility fee. What I'd like to do is give you a little background on why the fee was established to begin with, what we're using that fee to pay for now, and why we think an increase is needed. The stormwater utility was originally adopted in 1995, and it established a monthly fee based on water meter size. It created a funding mechanism to address the federally mandated National Pollution Discharge Elimination System program. The residential fee was set at an amount of $2.73 a month. Then in 2004, the council enacted an incremental increase in the fee over a four-year period that raised the residential fee from $2.73 a month up to $4 a month by 2007. We use the revenue from the drainage fee to pay for several things. The first thing is obviously our stormwater quality program, which implements the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. We also use it to pay for some drainage programs in our street traffic and drainage maintenance division, and we also pay for some technical review positions in our engineering division that review drainage plans. We also use the fee to pay for several things having to do with the Oklahoma River, general maintenance, debris removal, and the repair of equipment. We issue, council approves contracts to maintain drainage channels, and we also do some capital projects. Specifically, the Household Hazardous Waste Facility at 15th and Portland was constructed using the drainage fee, and we also do some minor drainage projects with that fee. I'm going to go over each one of these just briefly to give you an idea of what these different programs provide. The Stormwater Quality Program, our staff responds to reports of pollution and illegal discharges. They test to determine the content and the source so that appropriate action can be taken. The hazardous emergency spill response provides technical support to the fire department as well. Our staff also requires, and any construction project that is planned must include an erosion control plan. The plan shows what measures will be included and how they will be maintained so that we can prevent contamination of our waterways in the adjoining property. During construction, those measures that have been installed or inspected every other week to make sure that they are being maintained properly. Our staff also coordinates the development of training and public outreach programs to curtail the excessive use of chemicals which harm our aquatic life and cause problems at our treatment facilities. Presentations are made to citizens groups, professional organizations, and schools emphasizing the importance of environmental awareness, and the strides the city has made to provide a safe and clean quality of life and ecology. During dry weather, there are about 540 locations that are monitored to determine if there are illicit discharges or contaminants. If there are, these can be traced back to the source and eliminated. We also do storm event sampling. After a rainfall, we go to locations where we've got major outfalls to creeks and rivers and sample those to determine if there's a pollutant load in existence. We also do floatables assessment. Our streams are studied to determine where human-generated trash and debris are causing adverse impacts to our waterways. I mentioned the Household Hazardous Waste Facility at 15th and Portland. This facility provides a safe place for our citizens to dispose of chemical waste such as paint, old batteries, and chemicals. In our street traffic and drainage maintenance division, we provide cleaning of clogged curb inlets and drainage structures. We had a lot of this that we're still doing from the storm on Sunday afternoon. The hailstorm in the north part of town created a huge problem with leaves and debris in the streets that have clogged some of our drainage inlets. We also repair and replace concrete drainage structures along our waterways. The Oklahoma River Program, we make repairs to the dams and the SCADA system. The SCADA system is what controls and monitors the three dams, the two locks, and the 22 monitoring wells along the river. We also use our maintenance barges to clean debris from the river when needed. I mentioned contracted channel maintenance. This is a photo of a before and an after, the before on the left and the after on the right. This provides annual contracts to remove vegetation and other debris from unimproved channels. I also mentioned capital projects. The Household Hazardous Waste Facility was constructed using the drainage utility fee, and we also do minor drainage projects, such as the one in the lower right, that's a recent photo from a project going on in Rollingwood addition near 63rd and Meridian. Okay, why are the funds, additional funds warranted? Basically, four reasons. The budget that you receive from the Public Works Department proposes a transfer of the funding for the railroad drainage maintenance program from the general fund to the drainage utility fee. We have a continuing problem on the river with sediment. I'll get into a little bit more detail about that in just a minute. That sediment needs to be removed on an ongoing basis. We have a need for capital equipment replacement, and we have increasing operational costs. The railroad drainage maintenance program basically provides for ditch cleaning. The railroad drainage maintenance program basically provides four ditch cleaning. The railroads can fill with vegetation. Those ditches fill with vegetation and debris, and with this program provides the cleaning to prevent roadway and property flooding. That program also replaces pipes, ranging from small ones, as you see on the bottom right, to some rather large ones, as you see on the top left. This map indicates the work order locations for this fiscal year through April. We've had about 234 work orders so far through the first 10 months of the fiscal year, and you can see that these work orders are spread out pretty much all over the city. Some of them, you might notice, are in some urban areas, and most of those have to do with the cleaning of concrete line channels. I also mentioned the sediment on the river. When the river lakes were constructed, a sedimentation basin was constructed upstream from Meridian. The basin... the river was widened in this area to slow down the velocity of the water, so that the sediment could fall out more easily. Excavation was done to create a sedimentation basin below the flow line of the river, so that the sediment could be caught in this area and not fill up to three river lakes, and create problems around the dams and the locks. With the increased activity that we've got on the river, it's very, very important that we keep this basin with an adequate capacity. We have a contractor out there right now executing the third of three work orders that have been issued since August of 2008. When this work order is completed, we will have removed 180,000 cubic yards of material from that basin at a cost of just over $2 million. I mentioned capital equipment replacement. There's a need of about $1.9 million in equipment replacement. This equipment is utilized in performing a variety of drainage maintenance functions. Funding will allow for the replacement of equipment over a four-year period. In advance of this, we're currently replacing... In fact, I believe there's an item on the agenda today to approve funding for replacing the seven trucks that are used in drainage maintenance, and these funds came from the Drainage Bond Fund. This chart indicates a breakdown of our customer base. As you can see, about 91 percent, about 177,000 accounts are single-family. The remaining 9 percent are commercial accounts and multifamily residential accounts. The graph that you see here illustrates the incremental rate increase proposed for the top four categories of customers, which comprise 99 percent of all our accounts. The one on the bottom in the blue is our residential and the small commercial accounts, and you can see on the far left how the current rate is at $4. And if the proposed increases are approved over a five-year period, that rate will go up to $5.69 a month. Then the other top three... top four categories, the next one is our next largest commercial rate, those are one-inch water meters. You can see the increase that is proposed for them. And then on with the next two proposed rate increases for the next two categories. There are several other categories that are... that have very, very small numbers of accounts associated with them, but these are the top four accounts, and account for about 99 percent of the total. This next graph gives you an idea of where we are currently compared to some cities in the area. We're currently at $4. This is on just the residential rate, which again is 91 percent of our accounts. If the increase is approved, that rate would go to $4.50 for next year. You can see El Paso and Fort Worth have an asterisk next to them. They both have three different residential rates, so the rate that you see is an average of those three. And then Wichita and Kansas City are obviously much lower than Oklahoma City, and lower than the others. The research that we did indicated that Wichita and Kansas City only pay for the program that administers the federally mandated National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. They don't have anything to do with any funding for a river like we do. They don't have any funding for technical review staff. They don't have any funding for railroad maintenance. So, that's obviously why they are significantly lower. That completes my presentation. I'll be happy to respond to questions.
Dennis?
Yeah, Skip, go ahead.
The replacement of vehicles... Did I understand you say that this was needed every four years?
It'll be done over a four-year period.
Okay. All right. Then I... I thought you said that every four years you had to replace them. I was wondering.
No, we've got a lot of... we've got a lot of older vehicles that need to be replaced, but we plan to do it over a four-year period.
And on the drainage issues in some of the rural areas, when the... are all of those maintained with tin couvert, tin horns?
You mean if there needs to be a couvert installed?
Yes.
Most in the rural areas, most of the pipes that you see are metal pipes, yes.
Okay.
We've started using some high-density polyethylene plastic pipe in some areas, and we've had some really good success with it. So, and it's a little bit less expensive, and the maintenance on it is not as great, so we may be using quite a bit more of that in the future.
Pat? Just a quick question, Dennis. On the ordinance itself, I notice there's a lot of other changes in addition to the fee changes. Are those just updates and improvements, or are there any significant changes we need to know about?
I think the main thing is the fee increase, yes. Rest of it is housekeeping.
There is under specific question, permit applications, and this is on page 14, 4816, under B, land disturbance activities not requiring a permit. And it looks like that's been revised. Is that the case?
I think that was the previous item. We're on item 8K.
I stepped out for a minute, I'm sorry, but I missed my opportunity to ask the question before, so I thought I'd jump in now.
Let me get my notes on that.
I'm sorry. I apologize for that, but I just stepped out for a minute.
What chapter are we on? 4816?
4816, yes.
That was basically defining the permit application requirements and procedures, and some expiration dates that aren't currently in there, and maintenance requirements for those land disturbing activities.
Under B, though, there's a lot of exceptions. Are those all new exceptions?
Bear with me while I find...
I apologize again for stepping out.
Craig, can you help on that?
Yes, sir. Councilman Ryan, the exceptions that are listed in B have actually been moved over from Chapter 57. One of the things we're also trying to do through this ordinance is a little bit of housekeeping, because some of the soil disturbing activity permit requirements and regulations were split between Chapter 48 and 57, and we're trying to get them all into one place in one thought. So, those are not new. Those are just transferred from an existing ordinance.
But these exceptions exist in our current ordinance.
That's correct.
Thank you. All right. Well, then, can I ask a question? On the fees, these will be escalated. Is that my understanding?
The fees will be increased to match the cost, but there also is a fee for a renewal or reissuance. What happened... what we're finding, what is happening practically, is initial permits are being obtained, and then activities are stopping, and then they want to re-initiate activities, and so we have to go back out and do a reinspection. Or the land does not meet standards, and we are constantly going out and re-inspecting at the city's cost, because the property owner has not brought their property up to standards, and which is doing repeated inspections without any change that meets our city's existing city standards.
So, wait. Go ahead.
The feeing... the fee, the new fees...
Right.
Are created to reimburse the city for repeated inspections.
Okay.
For example, if a developer or someone doing some soil disturbing activity says that they have met standards, and they put out their silt fences and the like, and they believe that they're up to standards, and we go out there and inspect it and say, "No, you didn't follow city standards," then we have to go out and re-inspect.
So, in reference to their drainage?
To their drainage, right.
Okay. How big of a problem has this been?
This has been a significant problem. We have to send inspectors out repeatedly to look at certain properties. Other better contractors and better developers, it is not a problem. It's an equity problem. We're not able to get the people who don't follow procedures into line, and this is one of the mechanisms for putting a handle on that. Most of our contractors and developers do a very good job and work very cooperatively with the department, but there's a disparity that we cannot make the ones who are not complying come into compliance, because it's a one-time fee, and all the rest of the costs then just comes back to the city.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions for staff?
I just have a comment. It seems to me that to escalate, especially in the rural areas, to escalate the fee is in effect an impact fee that we're gonna... now we're gonna make the homeowner. This is a recognition that development causes more expense. Well, really, everybody's all gonna be... really do this and put this escalating fee on homeowners now, and we've never been able to get off the dime on a development fee for the builders, the developers that build the property that... you know, if you proposed an impact fee on developers that said you're gonna pay $4.50 a month forever, except that not quite forever, because next year it's gonna be $5.50, and not quite forever, because next year it's gonna be $6.50, this place would be full. You know, but we can do this to individuals, we can do this to homeowners, based on the same theory that... I mean, I can't imagine what other theory there would be, other than the fact that more development creates more drainage problems, which costs more money to fix. But we're putting it right to the homeowner. And I just think that's an... I just think there's a kind of a paradox there, that if we get ready to try to do it on the front side, we can't even touch it. I mean, it's been tied up in the legislature now for 18 months, and we don't know what's gonna happen out there, but we can raise this to individuals without a whimper.
Don't you think that the ultimately... regardless of whether you assess the fee from the developer or the homeowner, the homeowner's ultimately gonna be the one who pays it? The developer's gonna act as a collector of fees, as when he sells the lot, and when the builder builds a house and sells a house, it'll all come back to the homeowner.
Yeah, and I think maybe we just oughta recognize that, and just start jacking the fees up on the front side on the homeowners. I mean, if that's the way we can do it, you know, we get... we have all these arguments, not arguments, but discussions about sprawl, and people write books about it, and they're all opposed to it, but what we're saying here is, let's just go ahead and sock it to them. I just, you know, I find it interesting, we're now transferring the rural stuff to this fee, and we found all these, you know, I'm just amazed. How about that? How about that for a good word?
Why don't you make a motion, Councilman? We accept item 8K.
Go ahead.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you.
We're on item 8L. This is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Has anyone signed up to speak on any item listed under 8L? All right. Sounds like we're ready... Nope, somebody's raising their hand. Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
My name's John Shields. My address is 411 West Waterloo Road.
Okay, and you're here to speak about which property?
I'm here to speak about... I'm just here to ask a favor of the council, if that's possible. There are three saltwater disposal wells located in northwest Oklahoma City that are being operated illegally under Oklahoma City regulations.
This is under item 8L. Are you here to speak under one of these structures?
He signed up for citizens.
Okay, we're not ready for citizens to be heard yet.
Oh, that's what I thought.
Okay, now, this was still on dilapidated structures. We'll have you back up here in a few minutes. Anybody wishing to speak under the public hearing regarding dilapidated structures on item 8L?
Move the items.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
I'm gonna go back to the courtroom. I'm just gonna ask a question.
Come on up.
He's on citizens to be heard, too.
Oh. I think you may be early. We're still discussing unsecured structures and dilapidated structures. We'll have you up in a few minutes. All right, we're on to item 8M. So, this is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8M?
Move the items.
All right, cast your votes, and that passed unanimously. We're on to item 8N. This is a revocable right-of-way use permit with downtown Oklahoma City to hold the Downtown Dash throughout Ward 6.
No, I'm ready to go.
Anybody wishing to speak about the Downtown Dash? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Three of the events on item 8O, throughout Ward 6 and 7. The first is a new leash on life. Meg, you wanna make a motion on that one?
I'm ready to go, please.
Okay, cast your votes on item 801. Passed unanimously. Item 802 is in Ward 7. It's the 2010 American Collegiate Rowing Association National Championship, which will be coming up this weekend. Skip, you wanna make a motion on that?
Yeah, this can be my new leash on life, so I'll support that.
All right. Cast your votes. We're voting on item 802, and it passed unanimously. And then item 803 is a wakeboard tournament to be held on the river in Ward 6.
No, I'm ready to go.
Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. That brings us to item 8P. I think Frank Barnes is here to give us an update on our emergency operations plan, and I think this is coincidental to the issues that we've had, rather than this previously scheduled.
It is. Frank's been working on this for a year, probably, to update his plan, but it really does, with the events over the last week or so, bring to light, one, the resources that we have for emergency response that we pulled into the response, particularly Monday and last week, and the tornadoes in the southeastern part of the community, but how important the plan is and the implementation of that, and how well our people know the plan and respond to it. And as we've gone through this, we're making some modifications to it. Frank?
Thank you, sir. The Oklahoma State statute requires that every jurisdiction have an emergency operations plan. The Oklahoma City Municipal Code specifies that the Oklahoma City Emergency Management will maintain that plan and keep it up to date. Keep in mind that this plan is a citywide plan that applies to all city departments. It's not specific to just a few, but it's for the entire city, and all of our departments, and some of our private nonprofit partners, as well as private sector partners. It's a framework for a comprehensive emergency management program, and it doesn't address every possible scenario that we could possibly encounter. Again, it is a framework, and provides a high premium on resourcefulness, improvisation, and creative problem solving. The plan was last updated in December of 2000, and since then, we've had many key events that have impacted emergency management, as well as response and recovery. Of course, we're all familiar with the events of 9/11 of 2001, and from that, we have a presidential directive that established the National Incident Management System. Further, they've mandated that all emergency operations plans written after 2005 be compliant with the National Incident Management System. Then we had Hurricane Katrina in August of 2005, and there were some federal legislation that came out of that event that further altered how we respond to and recover from disasters. This included applying the American with Disabilities Act to the Stafford Act, and the Stafford Act is the federal legislation that provides disaster assistance and recovery. They also passed the Pet Evacuation and Transportation Standards Act, also known as the PETS Act, with regards to how we evacuate and shelter pets, along with their human owners. The National Response Framework, which replaced the National Response Plan in 2008, requires that the... or specifies that disasters and emergencies are local, and that they will be handled local. And then the Comprehensive Preparedness Guide, CPG 101, that was released last year, that provides guidance and guidelines for the development of emergency operations plans. As we went to revise this plan, we used a collaborative approach, and our office, in developing any plan, uses a collaborative approach, engages the stakeholders in that process. We have the Oklahoma City Local Planning and Preparedness Council, or LPPC, that was created some years ago to manage a wide variety of homeland security grants, and is now created some years ago to manage a wide variety of homeland security grants and is now transitioned over to focusing more on the preparedness and planning side. They created an emergency operations plan revision task force, which was a multi-discipline, multi-agency task force made up of some of the key stakeholders in response and recovery. After they had developed their draft, it was reviewed by the membership of the LPPC who provided further input, and we made further revisions to it. We then submitted it to department heads for review and asked for their input with regards to the plan. That input and those recommendations were incorporated into the plan, and it's been reviewed by the municipal councilor's office, and their comments and input have been added to the plan. So we're now at the final stage where we're presenting to city council for adoption in accordance with the city municipal code. One final comment with regards to review is that this year, the federal government, specifically the Federal Emergency Management Agency, conducted a national plan review as directed by Congress. They had previously done a plan review in 2006, so this was the four-year follow-up. Although our plan had not yet been adopted by city council, we submitted our draft document to the federal government along with other plans that we developed. And the good news is that the review by Region 6 in Denton, Texas concurred with our self-assessment that we were compliant in various components of the plan and in various categories. And in three categories, they actually raised the rating we gave ourselves for catastrophic incidents and given us the maximum rating in three different categories. So, real quick review of what's different from now and what you may have read or seen in 2000. We've provided a hazard analysis summary. As opposed to other plans that would have page upon page describing the hazards that the city faces, we simply provided an easy-to-look-at table that you can look at and really easily and quickly figure out what our greatest hazards are that can impact and affect the city. And it's tied back to the city's hazard mitigation plan. There's a capability assessment. The federal government has identified 38 target capabilities that they would like jurisdictions and communities to be able to perform. The City of Oklahoma City organization, our city government, can perform 18 of those. The remaining 20 are the jurisdiction of state agencies, federal agencies, private nonprofits, and the private sector. And we partner with those organizations to accomplish those remaining 20 capabilities. We provided definitions, and we do this because sometimes the word disaster gets thrown around rather loosely. So we wanted to define what was a major emergency, what was a disaster, and what was a catastrophic incident. You'll notice in the definitions that we make reference to disruptions to social routines or processes, we make reference to catastrophic incident, including damage to the infrastructure, environment, economy, local morale in government. So we've put in the human factor. Many people traditionally think of disasters in context of deaths or injuries or property damage, and it goes beyond that. And so we've incorporated those definitions or that thought about the economy and our community into those definitions. We've identified our priorities, and these priorities are consistent with the Instant Command System as well as the National Incident Management System, with life safety, incident stabilization, and property and environmental preservation. Jurisdictional responsibilities. Obviously, we all know we're responsible for our own jurisdiction, but we may provide emergency response to another jurisdiction until they can assume responsibility. And we may request and/or provide mutual aid from other surrounding jurisdictions. Also in the document, we have defined the roles and responsibilities of city departments, state agencies and departments, the private sector, and private nonprofits as it relates to our plan and accomplishing our target capabilities. Those roles and responsibilities were reviewed, and we got extensive feedback from stakeholders on what they felt that they could actually do during an incident or disaster. On the response side of the plan, we created a one-page appendix that specifies or lists some of the major functions or tasks that we have to accomplish during an incident or disaster. We also included in our response a brief discussion with regards to the at-risk enhanced care and special needs population. And in our other plans, such as sheltering and reception and evacuation, we go into a little more detail and incorporate the American with Disabilities Act into those plans. We also addressed domestic animals, pets, and service animals, again, making reference to the PETS Act as well as the city's own service animal policy. Many emergency operations plans, both past and present, not only ours but in other jurisdictions, will address recovery, but usually address only short-term recovery. Our plan took it a little further. We included long-term recovery and reconstruction, which is something you don't find in many emergency operations plans. And we've identified that we will use a recovery task force to help manage that long-term recovery and reconstruction using multi-agencies, multi-jurisdiction, and all the stakeholders who have an interest in that reconstruction and recovery. We included disaster assistance as part of that recovery, and we addressed how we, as a city, would provide disaster assistance to our citizens when we don't have a presidential disaster declaration. After the events of last Monday, we still don't have a presidential disaster declaration, although the processes are in place to request one. But in the meantime, there's people who need help. They need assistance. Some of them don't have insurance or they were underinsured, and some are just overwhelmed by the events. And so we partner with our private nonprofit organizations such as United Way, American Red Cross, the Salvation Army, to provide that disaster assistance in the interim until we have a presidential disaster declaration. We also address in the plan the management of volunteers. We recognize that there are already existing volunteer agencies working in our community. They're both community and faith-based. And so we address how we will incorporate them into our plan, how they would work under the direction of their own agency, but we will assign them a task or mission. Then we address the unaffiliated or spontaneous volunteers, the convergence that occurs after disaster where people come forward to help their neighbors. And, you know, over the weekend, as I was down there at the county yard number two, we had folks coming in as far away as Kansas to help the citizens of Oklahoma City. And so we address that, the management of those spontaneous volunteers by establishing a volunteer center so that we can vet those volunteers, we can give them a credential, and we can put them to work in a coordinated fashion. Our plan goes into direction, control, and coordination, and this is where we talk about our compliance with the National Incident Management System. And we have the Instant Command System that provides the on-scene direction of what we call tactical resources. And you saw that last Monday with the establishment of an incident command post at 6801 South Anderson Road where you had police and fire working together in a unified command. Department command centers. Last week, you saw the Utilities Department who had established their own department command center to address the power outage at the Lake Draper Water Treatment Plant and how they managed and worked through that event to restore power and, again, restore drinking water to the city. And then multi-agency coordination system. We have a system in place to, again, coordinate all of our departments as well as the city government and our private nonprofit, private sector partners. We have a facility called the Regional Multi-Agency Coordination Center located at 4600 Martin Luther King next to the Zoo Amphitheater. That's where my office is located. And from that center, we provide that multi-agency coordination function. Most commonly, we monitor events and work to gather information to provide a common operating picture to the entire city. We also get into information sharing processes. We talk about the critical information needs, and we established an appendix that identifies for all city departments what kind of information we need to gather and collect to provide that common operating picture. Again, as I mentioned just a few moments ago, the emergency management or the Multi-Agency Coordination Center, when activated, gathers that information to provide the common operating picture. We also have a joint information center working through public information and marketing so that we can coordinate the information that's going out to the public as well as with the media so that we're providing a consistent message to the public. We talk about communications. The city has a very robust 800 megahertz radio system that allows us to have interoperability, which many cities don't have. Every city department can talk to each other, and we have a radio profile that allows us to get all city departments communicating together. We also use technology and electronic data. We've now using emails, and many of you may have seen some of the emails that come out of our office, and also a web EOC, which is a state initiative which we participate in. One of the members of my staff is actively involved in that project. And then plain language and terminology. It's important that we use plain language. There's a tendency amongst first responders to revert to their brevity codes, their ten codes, and during a disaster, a major emergency, we just need to use plain talk. Just say what you need to say, and just remember that if you wouldn't say it to your grandma, don't say it on the radio. And then we get into administration and finance. We provide for the city departments some guidance with regards to documentation so they understand the importance of that documentation and gathering it during and after the event. We talk about the after-action review, something that was not present in previous EOPs where after major emergencies, disasters, catastrophic incidents, we do an after-action review to identify our strengths, identify where we need to improve, what some of our best practices were and lessons learned, and develop an improvement plan so we can improve our response and recovery for the next event. And then we get into finance. And again, we stress to city departments the importance of tracking costs, and we provide some guidance in the document about what items they need to track costs on, which are important for disaster reimbursement. And then we talk about donations. Typically after disaster, there's a lot of people who want to make donations, and what we've put in our plan is that initially, at the outset of an event, we ask or direct citizens to make cash donations to the private nonprofits that are engaged in the disaster response and recovery, such as the American Red Cross, Salvation Army, United Way. The in-kind donations, the clothing, the food, furniture, things of that nature, we would not ask for until after we do a victim needs assessment, determine what the victims and the survivors actually need, and then ask for those donations, and only after we've established a donation center operated by a private nonprofit who can receive, inventory, sort, and distribute those donations. The document is user-friendly. We realized that in an event, you don't have time to pull that out and read the whole document. So what we did is we used appendices. And we have three appendices that you need to know. B, which has the response phase activities, it's a one-sheet, one-page document that identifies the key tasks. Appendix C that identifies the roles and responsibilities. And D, the critical information needs. So all someone really has to do is you grab those three appendices. If that's all you have in your hand at that moment or through that disaster, you'll probably find that it has all the information you need to work through the initial response and recovery. The distribution of the EOP, unlike in the past where there was an extensive effort to print those documents and maintain them and send out updates in paper form, we're going electronic. We're going to provide electronic copies to city department heads. The document will be posted on the city's internet for all city employees to access. We'll also post a version for the public on the city's internet because we do get requests from around the country for that document. And then through this summer and end of the fall, we'll do orientations where we'll actually make presentations to city employees to explain to them the plan. And do we have any questions?
Questions with Frank. Sam?
You mentioned that we don't have a, there is not a presidential declaration of a unified plan with regards to our nonprofits. Do you feel confident, or how confident do you feel in the local plan that's been worked out with our United Way, Red Cross, and other nonprofit sectors?
We have a good relationship with United Way and our nonprofits. We frequently interact with them, especially those that are sort of the tip of the sword, tip of the spear when it comes to response and recovery. And everyone knows their roles, and they know how they're going to function and how they will perform. And we saw that, again, this past Monday, where you see American Red Cross and Salvation Army mount up their operations and seamlessly, you know, appear on scene and begin doing the things that they've been detailed to do. On Tuesday, we coordinated with Red Cross on the damage assessment so that we didn't duplicate our efforts in the affected area, and we made best use, or maximum use, of the people that we had.
All right. Pete, then Skip.
One thing that I've been impressed with in this disaster, the one that is in my area, is the interest and the effort on the part of the county to participate in this, Oklahoma County. I recognize that this document is really an Oklahoma City document, but I'd like to see some effort made to coordinate that effort. I mean, Commissioner Mon has actually gone out and recruited volunteers that have done a lot of good things. I've toured the area and I've watched some of the things they're doing. And I've listened to some of his frustrations, but mainly his frustrations involve the fact he's not part of this plan. And I'd like to see us try to look at that a little bit, with a little broader view. I recognize, we haven't had anybody at the county willing to do the things that he appears to be willing to do, so this is a new thing, and it's not a criticism of us, of what we've done. But I think if there's a way to bring that help a little closer and work with it so we could coordinate it a little better, we'd all be better served for it.
Mr. White, the county goes have an emergency manager, David Barnes, and he coexists in the same facility with Frank Barnes. They do have a plan, and the best of my knowledge, the county plan and the city plan are very much a coordinated response effort.
Well, I think that misses my point. A plan's a plan, but we've got, in this particular case, we've had somebody willing to stand up and go way beyond that, willing to get out and actually do things, not just follow a plan, but actually solicit other people to help. And I'd just like to see us a little more open to it. I'm, don't, you need not be so defensive. I'm not displeased at all with what's gone on. All that tornado damage was in my ward. I mean, I've seen it all firsthand, and I appreciate very much what all's happened. The city's done a great job. I just wish that we could find some way
May I address that?
To handle some of that enthusiasm I see coming from the District 2 County Commissioner.
Sure, Frank, go ahead.
Okay, as Mr. Couch indicated, the Oklahoma County Emergency Manager, David Barnes, and I should note, is no relation to me. David and I office in the same place. That's why we have a regional multi-agency coordination center, because the two entities are there and we're able to communicate. And we were communicating together on Monday night. The plan is that David and I communicate from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, and he in turn would communicate with Mr. Mon. You know, we embrace his efforts to mobilize the volunteers and the donations, but it was much of a surprise to me, as it was to others, when that occurred, as we had no forewarning of it. And I'm not sure who knew what when, but we were not apprised of it until the effort had already been launched through the news media. And a simple consultation or conference in the late hours of Monday, early morning hours of Monday could have been greatly beneficial. And I'm not sure that's something that David and I will have to talk about.
No, I don't want you pointing fingers at people. I'm trying not to point fingers at anybody either. I'm saying, here's somebody that's enthusiastic and wants to work, and we need to find a way to bring that in. I don't want you, I don't want you pointing fingers at him. He did what he thought was the right thing to do. And I think we did what we thought was the right thing to do, and in large measure, it got solved by a meeting that happened, which should have occurred earlier. But I don't
Mr. Mon's efforts over the week were a great effort to help clean up and to take care of the people that were needed, and we appreciate those efforts. I think we need to have some meetings after this event and to address how that can be implemented in and before, and I think that's going to happen. I think it's great.
I wish I'd have said it that way. That's what I mean. I'm not, don't take it, I don't have any criticism. Everybody worked hard, everybody did a good job, everybody did everything. I'm just, I'm not sure we were prepared for someone that had the enthusiasm to do the things he's done. That's just not happened before. And so I'd just like to see us open up our vision a little bit with regard to that. And one phone call, too. The manager created a meeting that solved most of those problems that I was hearing about. But I don't, you don't have to be defensive. I mean, I appreciate what everybody's done. It's been a great effort on the part of lots of folks, and I appreciate it very much.
All right, Skip?
Yes, Mr. Barnes, first of all, I want to thank you and your staff for the quick alert that you have provided in reference to this past couple of weeks of what we've had to deal with in the city. And of course, my colleague here has, I thank her also for the efforts in reference to giving us information directly over our BlackBerries. That was, good move. Yes, okay. Well, thank Debbie. Well, thank you, okay. But anyway, I read your comment this morning in the newspaper, and the But anyway, I read your comment this morning in the newspaper and the storm that we had on Sunday, your comment was that there is a way that an alert could have been given in reference to a geographical part of the city? Is that correct?
With regards to the hail, if we had a policy in place that stated we would activate our outdoor warning devices for winds over 75 miles an hour or large hail, for example, one and a half inch or larger, if that policy was in place, under the conditions we saw Sunday, we would activate them. And because of the area that that storm covered, we would have activated all of the devices in Oklahoma County, covering, you know, that part of the city that fit in Oklahoma County.
Can you draft a policy?
As I indicated in the newspaper article, we need a regional policy if we're going to do it. We really need to get 26 other jurisdictions to buy into it. If we go it alone, it can further add to the confusion that already exists in the community about the tornado sirens because each jurisdiction has its own policy, albeit many are similar. There's just enough difference that there's some confusion amongst the public as to what the sirens mean and what they're supposed to do.
Mr. Couch, based upon the events over Saturday or after Sunday afternoon, we're certainly going to be reviewing that and taking a look at how we can improve the policy and coordinate that with the other jurisdictions that are out there.
When we say 26 other jurisdictions, we're talking about other municipalities?
Other municipalities and counties. Even some of the county emergency managers operate outdoor warning devices as well. And we have, we share a common border with about 26 different jurisdictions that we've identified in our planning processes. And that's kind of a decision as we develop a policy like that, I imagine at some point we'll just have to decide, you know, how many of the 26 do we want to get onboard and how many is acceptable not to have onboard? And that will come out in the process of developing that policy.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Couch, but, you know, if there's any jurisdictions that has an issue with that, just leave them out. I just don't think that, you know, somebody could be that egregious to not support an effort to alert citizens in reference to what we had in Oklahoma City on Sunday evening for the damage that it did in the short period of time that it did it in. You know, I really will support any type of policy that would give us and our citizens a little bit more of a warning as it relates to those type of wind and the hail.
We do have, as a project within the Central Oklahoma Urban Area Security Initiative, to develop and draft a regional policy with regards to the outdoor warning devices. So that is a project that's there. It's one of the things we do want to accomplish. And now in the events of Sunday, the issue of the large hail and damaging winds will need to be discussed as part of that policy development. Previously, the focus had solely been on tornadoes.
Okay. Thank you. You say solely on tornadoes. What about national defense? Is that not an issue or sirens not being used?
At the end of the Cold War, that kind of dropped off and the outdoor warning devices began focusing their use more on natural disasters. We would have to revisit, again, as part of that policy with regards to national defense.
But it's not currently in the plan?
No, sir.
Okay.
But you could work on it.
We could add that. We can add that to the policy. We can put it in there.
Yeah. The issue would be, who's going to sound the siren?
We. I'll sign. He called me out.
Put that in the book.
Yes.
Call Skip.
If you know what I went through Sunday, yeah, I'll sound it.
Brian's made a motion to approve the resolution. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Frank, thanks for your work.
Thank you.
All right. We have a series of opportunities here to go into executive session. I understand on item 8Q, we do not need executive session?
We do not.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8R, I understand we do not need executive session?
We do not. This is just a mediation and Councilman Ryan has agreed to go. If there's a settlement that comes out of it, we'll bring that back to the council.
All right. So it's passed unanimously. Item 8S, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes, sir.
All right. That's moved. And item T, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
And it's moved. Item U, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
Item 8V, is claims recommended for denial? Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8V?
Move the item.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8V. Passed unanimously. Item nine, is claims recommended for approval? Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under item nine?
Move the item.
All right. Cast your votes. Item nine, passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. Gary, you want to get us started?
Yes, sir.
All right, Sam?
Mayor, just a comment on a good feel story from yesterday. I attended a cookout at Fire Station 11 Northwest 50th near Chertel. This is 14th Annual Cookout for students that attend Horace Mann and Putnam Heights Elementary School. Their top readers in each class are recognized each year at a cookout at the fire station. And a really good feel about this is that this began 14 years ago after the Miller Building bombing. And there was such a outpouring of support to that fire station from the nearby neighborhood school, elementary school, Horace Mann. Coffee and food was taken over and then letters from students, on and on and on. And finally, at the time I understand it was Major Cook that was chief at the station, went to the school and said, you know, what can we do in some way to reciprocate? And that's what was the advent of that. It's been going for 14 years. Now added Putnam Heights Elementary School, recognizing at the fire station, a little treat for the kids, a lunch for the teachers and students that read so many books each year. Ed Koch is a longtime firefighter, going to be retiring after 30 years, the end of this year, has been carrying the baton most of those years. They're just hopeful that that will continue. But just a good, good community effort.
All right. You bet. Larry?
I'd just like to encourage the residents of Marion Hills and also Windsor Forest to check on their neighborhood meetings coming up this week and look forward to seeing them at the neighborhood meeting. Thank you, Your Honor.
Pete? All right, Brian?
I have a question regarding the debris created from the storm. Are we going to have trucks coming through and helping with that removal, with the debris on the curbs?
We are going to... We're putting together a plan that we're out for bid right now for debris from the area on the tornado area.
Okay. And will that correlate with big junk pickup bay?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. What we're going to do, what we've done historically and we're planning to do again, is in the area where we've had significant damage, the big tornado area where we had the devastation, we'll identify what that area is. We will have a contractor come in and do curbside removal and they'll just go down the road from neighborhood to neighborhood. So it won't be on your big junk pickup day.
All right. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. I think Wednesday, a number of us around Horsham had an opportunity to attend the luncheon, which is the Education and Appointing Ministry event. And I just wanted to recognize the work that they do and appreciate their various partnerships with other nonprofits and look forward to working with them in our West Ham Resource Center. Friday afternoon, St. Anthony Hospital is beginning a farmer's market on their campus, right there at Ninth Street on the Devon Plaza. I think it's scheduled to be every Friday afternoon, beginning at 2:30. And they had, you know, farm-fresh eggs. They had fresh produce, jams, jellies, honey, all sorts of things, all locally sourced in Oklahoma. And I'd encourage neighbors to come out and see that. Saturday was the Miller Neighborhood Tour, very well-attended, five or six great properties and gardens. And that's a neighborhood that's so involved in improving their neighborhood and it was wonderful to see all those folks. And yesterday was the announcement of a great partnership between Chesapeake and the University of Central Oklahoma, the launch of a new third boathouse on Boathouse Row called the CHK Central Boathouse. And it just, I think as we talked today about all these events that are happening on the river, it's just amazing how transformational our Boathouse District is going to be and very exciting. And thank you to Chesapeake.
Skip?
Yes. First of all, I would like to thank the citizens of the Lower JFK area and North Highlands, the neighborhood associations for the efforts that they have made in reference to the quality of their community and their neighborhood and the grants they received. And if it felt like that I was, you know, trying to put a negative on their accomplishments, I apologize because that was not my intent. And so to them, to those ladies and all the citizens that participated in the grant and the efforts that they put in, you're to be commended for that. And I thank you for your continued involvement in your community. This Saturday, May the 22nd, St. John's Missionary Church is having a very, very great program in which they are providing free health services and counseling and nutritional advice as it relates to healthy heart and primarily for women. And I would encourage anyone to go to St. John's Missionary Church from 8:30 to 2:30. And there will be doctors, there'll be nutritionists, individuals who are preparing healthy foods and teaching how to prepare healthy foods for issues as it pertains to heart conditions, diabetes. And so I think it's a very great program in which the church is stepping out into the community, St. John's Missionary Baptist Church, and the efforts of Dr. Betty Jo Burak and the rest of the members and other community organizations that is relit behind this effort. And on last Friday, last Saturday, approximately 400 people turned out for the Healthy Walk Program over at Douglas High School and the Lower JFK area and Douglas High School and Fairview Baptist Church walked away with the award for having over 50 people from their church to participate in the program. So these are great programs as it relates to addressing the quality of health of citizens in the community. And Lincoln Park, the trails are open at Lincoln Park. There's new outdoor exercise equipment there that is being really used by the citizens. And we want you to know that we're continuing to work towards trying to upgrade the park and just ask that everyone get out and enjoy and participate in the trails and the sidewalks that are now in place. And we can see that it is making a difference in people's, you know, health. Thank you.
Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to call attention to the fact that Oklahoma City's Paws Park, or Dog Park, received recognition through national publications, organizations, as being outstanding facilities. We owe a debt of gratitude to our Parks Department and Mr. Don Bobzine for that effort out there.
Agreed. All right. City manager reports?
Several reports in your packet. We had a request to talk about the long-range capacity of landfills, so that was put in your packet. I think it was Councilman Barnes had asked for that. And then there was a report in there regarding chickens within residentially zoned areas. And with that, if you have to answer any questions the council may have.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to make some comments on the city manager report with regards to chickens in residentially zoned areas.
We have a couple of people that have signed up to speak. Do you want to hold those comments until they come up or do you want to make them now?
I just think... Make them now.
Go ahead. All right.
Sarah Brayden, citizen who is with us today, came before city council and made the request that the council give consideration to an ordinance that would allow chickens in residential backyards. Since then, as the report shows, we looked at our peer cities, seven of eight allow of those eight cities allow chickens in backyards. I asked the neighborhood alliance to do a survey of email lists that they have. They utilized that and the survey came back with a great majority who also favored it. I've been doing since the first of the year, just my own informal survey where I've had opportunities. And what I've told Ms. Brayden is that shouldn't be anything that she's hearing, I hadn't talked with her about, but I have just found it very divided in groups that I've met with, individuals that I've talked with. I even used the opportunity in two elementary schools when I get an opportunity to speak about city government in schools and had a lot of fun with it. But honestly, it came down much like I've experienced in my own informal surveys, just right down the middle, about half and half. I've even had the opportunity in the same households with couples to find one on one side and one on the other. And at this point in time, my own personal opinion, as is reflected in the staff report and I've told Ms. Brayden, I'm really not recommending on a citywide basis that we consider an ordinance to allow that. However, I know, I've come to know her persistence, but I've also come to know her patience and her amicability in working with her. Been very cordial to work with and I know this is not going to go away. And she's not going to go away and obviously others aren't also. So in the meantime, I've checked with our planning and planning staff and our legal staff. And what I would like to do without any action, because we can't take action today, but I would ask the planning staff to come back to the council after our budget hearings pass in 60 to 90 days and ask them if they would bring back to the council a process whereby on a neighborhood petition or at a neighborhood request, we might look at the idea of an urban conservation district amendment or perhaps a specific overlay district that would allow backyard chickens on a neighborhood by neighborhood petition, understanding that this would take some kind of vote or signature, majority vote, signature within the neighborhood before it ever came back to council. But on a neighborhood by neighborhood petition, that kind of a process, without getting into any of the details, I would like to ask the planning commission or planning staff to come back to the council again 60 to 90 days with just a process for us to consider on a neighborhood initiative basis. And within that process certainly would be criteria for any neighborhood that would be considered. And I think we have sufficient criteria within the seven peer cities that have adopted that, that our staff to just put that together and come up with some consensus as a criteria. And then that'd be part of the process for consideration on a neighborhood by neighborhood petition basis for our consideration.
All right. Request from Councilman Bowman. Brian, what'd you want to say about it?
I'm going to take the complete opposite side of the issue, which is probably no surprise. You know, first of all, that sounds way, way too complicated for me. This is an issue where peer cities have some form of this. I don't foresee somebody without the capacity to do this right is going to run out and jump out and do this. I would imagine that this is not the most convenient thing. But one of the things I was sitting here and I was thinking about as I knew we were getting to this point was we had a gentleman in here earlier that was wanting to put in a business and the application was in Gary's district, the current Q Palaces in my district. And I was thinking about the people causing problems. On my side of town and what Gary perceived was going to foresee as a problem on his side of town. My guess is that none of those people ever had the opportunity to raise chickens. And I look back here at Ms. Brayden and I'm thinking, you know, I get compliments all the time on my children and how well behaved they are. But I can guarantee that my children would not have sat here for two hours and 35 minutes and been as well behaved as these children are. I don't foresee a family like this is going to be causing a problem. I think that they're going to follow their rules. They're wanting to follow the rules. They're wanting to teach their children not only responsibility, they're wanting to teach them how to take care of something. They want to teach them how, you know, where food comes from, being responsible. And it just seems to me that we spend a lot of time on things that maybe at the end of the day really are a moot point. I just, Sam, I understand your concerns about the neighborhoods and things, but the 1% I know about raising chickens, it seems to me that the people that are going to do this are going to be partly the most... this are going to be probably the most responsible of our citizens. And the enforcement issue, I don't think is an issue at all. A lot of things that we do are on a complaint basis, and I just don't foresee many neighbors having complaints about this. I would like actually an official survey. If we're going to be starting to quote statistics and survey results, I'd like something that's more scientific. With the one that the Neighborhood Alliance did, they obviously have a very target market. My guess is that very few of those residents were from South Oklahoma City. The other thing is, is that an informal survey where you're asking, you're asking people without informed opinions. So I would really like, if we're going to start quoting statistics, to have something a little bit more formal, a little bit more scientific. But I would be more than happy to support the ordinance for citizens that are like this, that their children are well behaved, and if we could get all of our citizens to act in a responsible manner like this, like these types of families, well, I think we'd have a lot less problems on our hands.
Meg?
Brian, that would be awesome, because we would have a number of the problems that we have. I guess I have a couple of comments to make. And Sam, I really appreciate the amount of time you've spent working on this and trying to come to a good resolution. That's what you get for wearing a scarf. This isn't working very well. I guess I would make a couple of comments. First is that well before Ms. Brayden came to visit with us and make these suggestions, Ward Six probably receives the greatest number of complaints about chickens. From the time I took office, it's been a surprise to me that actually the number of phone calls we get about chickens in neighborhoods. And so that's a little bit of an overlay of where I'm coming from. I'm a New Yorker originally and have been in Oklahoma City for 25 years, and I'm going to steal one of Pete White's lines, I think, at this point, which is, I just can't imagine a city that offers as many lifestyle alternatives as Oklahoma City does offer. You don't have to go very far. We currently allow chickens on an acre of land, and those acreages exist all over our city. I lived for 18 years in Edgemere Park at 32nd and Harvey Parkway, and I lived on an acre of land, and we could have had chickens right there in the city. We just had the adequate acreage. The Symphony Designer Showhouse this year was out at Lake Overholzer, and there was a house on the lake that's 17,000 square feet of house, and next door to it, the neighbors have horses in their front yard. So there are many, and this is on Northwest 23rd Street, again, 10 minutes from downtown Oklahoma City. There are many, many options. And so as I surveyed my Ward Six neighbors, and those are both north and south, but historic neighborhoods like Mesta Park and Miller Neighborhood and Here to Chills, and the jury is really out on whether the neighbors are in favor. I mean, it is a very divisive issue, as Sam said. And I just personally think, given the option to live in the city but live on the current acreage required for chickens, that those lifestyles, families should choose those lifestyles for themselves. And if you want to live in an urban environment, perhaps you don't want chickens. So it's complicated. I think I could support Sam's discussion of maybe working on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis so that we really had buy-in of folks before we imposed a change in our ordinance.
All right, any other comments on this issue? Should I know?
Is it my opinion, Sam, that you are?
Hold on, Skip, I keep on.
I'm sorry. I support an ordinance that would permit chickens. I have read that survey a little differently. It didn't look like to me it came down the middle. It looked to me that 2/3 of the people in Oklahoma City favor chickens, when you put some restrictions on it. In terms of whether or not it's an accurate survey or not, it's probably a survey that in all fairness would have been slanted toward not having chickens as opposed to a broader survey that would have taken in some of the areas that are probably left out. I don't mean that was intentional, but I suspect it wasn't as broad as it might have been. You know, I don't know that it's worth a long, protracted series of hearings and meetings if there's not support for that on the council, but it looks to me like that there was support for it on that survey. And perhaps some modification would be in order. I mean, I, you know, my folks raised chickens in the neighborhood where I grew up, and so did about half the people that lived there. It wasn't, you know, there were no restrictions at that point in time. I think, given certain kinds of restrictions, as the survey showed, I think the vast majority of people in Oklahoma City would be okay with it. But I will tell you this, I'm not going to try to propose an ordinance for a purpose of being Don Quixote. I mean, I'm not going to do that. If the majority of us around this horseshoe is not willing to take a look at it, then it doesn't make a lot of sense to do it. But I, for one, would support one, and so we're up to two, Brian.
Let's skip, and then Larry. Skip?
I was thinking about this whole issue, and I kind of agree with Councilman Salyer that there are places. No one is saying that you can't raise chickens. So I would be willing to bet that if any of the downtown residents came out with three or four chickens running around downtown Oklahoma City, we all would be up in air about chickens and all the waste and everything else in our urban district. And so I think when we start talking about this concept of urban, you know, you have to be careful of what you say can be in an urban area. And I just think that, you know, we provide for an area, and in my opinion, it is not discriminatory. You know, where you live has a whole lot to do with what you can do. You know, I've had citizens who've called and complained about conditions in an area, and I have to tell them that it's zone double A, and they can do that there. You know, and just maybe, you know, a half a mile away, it's zoned a different area. And I just think that, you know, this whole concept about urban, whether or not the survey says one thing or not, I just believe that we provide citizens an opportunity to engage in the raising of chickens if they so desire, and that should be enough.
All right, Larry?
Yeah, I wasn't going to say anything, but I will give the results of my study. The areas that, the neighborhoods that I've talked to have been overwhelmingly against chickens by the ratio of five to one. The neighborhood that I happen to live in, 660 homes, has a neighborhood covenant, which a lot of the neighbors do not realize, which specifically outlaws the having of any chickens on the neighborhood. When you start talking about urban and you look at some of the statistics here and some of the restrictions, setbacks of some of these other towns, and you're talking about setbacks of 30 to 50 feet for a structure, I'd submit to you that an R1 residential lot in Oklahoma City is 6,000 square feet, which is roughly 120 by 50, and it doesn't support the kind of structure that these things are talking about. So I'm against chickens, and my neighborhoods are against chickens, and that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
All right, Gary?
Well, if you, I'd like to kind of head back to some of the things that in Sam's report, or in the city manager report that Sam was talking about. It's obvious that there's a real division on either you like chickens or you don't like chickens and so on. You only get to a majority of the Neighborhood Alliance survey supporting chickens if you have the restrictions on them. And it's easy to say that they would be okay in residential areas if you put the right kind of restrictions on them so that they weren't annoying to either your neighbor or the neighborhood. But then you get right back, we can't enforce a lot of the junk and debris and front yard parking and everything else that goes on, but yet we're going to put another enforcement issue. You get one person that's going to put a chicken coop in, and you're going to have three neighbors that are going to start calling on it. And so I'm, I'm really torn with whether this is going to be a functional issue or not if we should decide to move down that road. I'm not saying I made up my mind that I'm against it, because I've had a number of people say that it'd be a good thing to have for all the reasons that have been cited. But I've also had a number of neighborhoods say that they don't want them in their neighborhoods and/or anywhere close to their neighborhoods. I'd have to really study hard your suggestion of doing it through some kind of a conservation district or something so that you do it neighborhood by neighborhood, because just like a single residence has got a neighbor that might object to it, every neighborhood has an adjoining neighborhood that you're going to have to deal with. And to bring this issue up in front of council one by one for us to hash over whether chickens are good for that particular neighborhood is not something that I relish either. So I don't know. I don't, I guess I'm circled back around to, I don't know where I'm at on this, but I think the, it only, for those that want them, I hear they only want them if there's certain restrictions that make them to where they're not a nuisance. Those kind of restrictions are going to cause a great enforcement issue for our staff here in Oklahoma City. So it's, I don't want to lose sight of that issue either.
Yeah, I think what you're pointing out is that if we are going to put in some regulation to allow chickens, we probably ought to get a staff report on the cost to the city, what they anticipate. And maybe we can get some of our peer cities that have gone down that road before to estimate their costs, and that's if we want to move forward. I would suggest that if someone wants to bring a resolution forward, that they go through the city manager, and then the council can consider it down the line when that's done. Sound like a good futuristic step? All right, we will transition then to citizens to be heard.
Your Honor, before we do that, I have a question on the landfill report.
Okay.
I realize it's not nearly as racy as chickens, but on the estimate of the useful life in the landfills, was any consideration given to extending those useful lives by encouraging a recycling program?
That was simply what the landfills indicated that the useful lives, the private landfills said, was their life based upon the current.
By current, you said there was no consideration either for the impact of a recycling effort or the growth in our community?
There was growth, but not, it was a current, current conditions estimate provided by the landfills.
Well, I think we need to look at some, you know, any alternative we can, because 10 years, it seems like a long time, but we may reach a point where it's going to be impossible to construct landfills. We've had examples here of the impact on our neighborhoods, and I think to the extent we can look for alternatives, that we ought to pursue those alternatives.
Pat?
I was going to make the same comment, Mayor, if I could, because I was the one that asked for this. I don't think 10 years is a long time if you're talking about either another site for the current type of landfill operations that we operate and all the problems involved in that. I also heard some discussion that technology may be that we do waste disposal different in the future. But I'm not sure that's a short-term issue either. So I'm not sure that those numbers that are in this report don't justify that we ought to start looking at what our long-term waste disposal, solid waste disposal issues are and what we're going to do with that. I don't, you don't have, I'm sure you've got all kinds of time right now, the staff does to work on that, but it's not something that we should take lightly.
I couldn't agree more. I think, I know in the one landfill that I'm most familiar with, I'm kind of torn when I approach the concerns about it, because one side of me says, thinks about the difficulty in re-permitting or permitting another landfill at another location. I mean, it's going to be almost impossible. It would be, it would be an ordeal to do it now, and I suspect if we wait 10 years, it would even be worse to try to find a location that would be as suitable to do it. So they want to expand. They want, like the matter that was proposed just a couple of weeks ago, they're looking to expand, and the people that were here protesting would probably sell to them in a minute if they buy. But if they bought, that means that gives them more land to expand, and that's one more neighborhood they're going to get that's going to be impacted by it. So I really do think that as soon as we get through the budget thing, that it certainly would be one of the things that we ought to start looking at very seriously about what our future, what the future holds for it. I think the only way to really effectively do it in the short run is through some kind of recycling, some kind of, we've got to incentivize it or do something to make recycling a better way to do it. I just, I think we're going to pay for that. Short-term, it may be very expensive to do it, but long-term, I think we're going to pay for the fact that we're not doing it.
I think we're around the corner, though, from some technology that's going to allow private sector recycling to make it fundamentally workable. I don't know if we're, you know, there are some that say the business model's in place today, and I don't believe that, but I think we may be five or 10 years away from some significant changes in the way we dispose of garbage in the United States.
Well, I'm hopeful that you're right about that, but I will, I will once again point out how old I am. I was here in the middle 80s when the city invested lots and lots of money in a trash, in a waste of energy project that had every hope of being successful, and it was an abysmal failure, and we spent tons of money on it, and that's 25 years ago. So I don't know. Hopefully, you're right. Hopefully, you're right. But I've been there, done that one time.
I would suggest we let others go first.
Yeah, but we did it in the 80s, and it was a well-thought-out process, and everybody thought it was going to be the way to go. And I think, I think another kind of recycling, that is where you just remove the waste from the stream, that's a much more effective tool, short-run, than these waste energy and things like that that may or may not work out. But I do think we're going to look at it. I just can't imagine the trauma that we'd go through if we decided that we needed another dump facility or, in say, in northwest Oklahoma City. Where would we, where would we locate that?
Yeah, we'll put you in charge of that committee. We have citizens to be heard.
I just have one question.
Okay.
On the landfill report, Mr. Couch, the northeast is the 17.1 year. Is that for the future or that's the total number of years?
The question asked of the landfill was, what's the useful lives of your landfill? Now, those were the numbers provided to us by that landfill. So they believe at their current rate, unless something, with the same type of activities that we are having right now, that that landfill has 17 years left.
Okay, 17 years left. All right, okay.
Okay, we're on to citizens to be heard, and we're back to the backyard chicken issue. We have a number of people that have signed up on a variety of issues today. I will ask them to keep their comments to three minutes. Sarah Brayden? Sam, would you pull the microphone down so we can hear you more clearly? Thank you.
Is that, is that good?
And we will need your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. I'm Sarah Brayden, and my address is 1143 Northwest 38th Street, Oklahoma City. And thank you, Sam Bowman, thank you, everybody, for considering the backyard chicken issue. I know there's a lot going on, but I really appreciate it. I absolutely support backyard chickens with restrictions in Oklahoma City. I appreciate Councilman McAtee mentioning that the peer cities study really some of the restrictions in some of our peer cities, even though they technically allow chickens, the restrictions are so restrictive that it's really pretty much impossible for most people to have backyard chickens. So I would appreciate it if city council considers having backyard chickens be legal, that the restrictions be reasonable. I have some assistance here to help me with something that, I did my own sort of informal peer cities study. I looked at the 30 NBA teams, because I know we're a big league city now, and that's part of Oklahoma City now. And so I have a... And so I have a, see if this is, this is low-tech here, so I hope it'll work. Yeah, so you grab this. These are the seven NBA cities that do not allow chickens. So, this is the difficult part, the 23 NBA cities where chickens are allowed, and I don't know what the restrictions are on them, but 23 out of 30 chickens are allowed. So, I'll see if this low-tech thing works. So, I just wanted, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate the fact that there are people in Oklahoma City who don't approve of backyard chickens, but I wanted to give this visual impact and thank everyone very, very much for even considering this.
All right, thank you, Sarah.
Can I ask her a question?
Sure.
Sarah, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What is the, I guess the, oh, what's the word I was looking for? The concern that the residents have that don't want chickens, what is their biggest concern that you hear?
I think if you look at the online survey that Neighborhood Alliance conducted, several concerns are listed there. The primary one that I hear about is noise, and number one on my list is no roosters, you know? I mean, a lot of people love roosters. I've talked to a lot of people who say, "Well, I would much rather have a rooster next door than a barking dog," but I think that it's really important not to have roosters be allowed. The second concern that people have is smell, and I'm suggesting that we really limit the number, of course, and with a limited number of backyard chickens, you know, cared for, well-cared-for, and cleaned up after every once in a while, smell really isn't an issue either.
So, city manager, if I wanted to have four boxers, boxer dogs, could I have four boxer dogs in my backyard?
Yes, sir.
Would, do you think, in your livestock-growing opinion, that four boxers would be louder and smell worse than chickens would?
I definitely think that dogs, any dogs would be louder. I mean, if, you know, if they bark and haven't been trained not to bark. I don't know very much about dogs, but I do have, both my neighbors on both sides of me have dogs that occasionally bark, and my neighbors on both sides of me fully support me having chickens, and they're embarrassed about, you know, that their dogs bark sometimes and create smelly waste.
Well, what I, the payload that I was trying to draw is, is that, is that we make a distinction between one being another on assumptions that really are almost backwards, that if we can have four dogs. I have a yellow lab, I love her dearly, would not have a second one. She's a handful, she doesn't bark that much, but as far as, you know, taking care of one dog, that is a handful, and I can't imagine taking, having to take care of four of those dogs. Neighbor around the corner has four boxers, and that's why I asked that question. So, you know, it's okay to make, it's okay if we discuss this back and forth, but the point is, is let's use, let's use reasonable common sense standards when we're discussing it, not isolate one animal when the arguments we're using actually would exclude animals that we do allow, so.
I appreciate that.
Sarah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Gregory, we will need your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, my name's Greg Sederith. I live at 4329 Northwest 47th in Ward 1, and I'm right on the edge of war acres, and I'm new to the neighborhood, additionally, having lived in Wilberton for six years previously. Every morning at about 5:00, I hear a distant rooster, and recently, while exercising, I decided to go ahead and track it down. It turns out, it lives about four blocks to the east of me in what is called Bush Hills, which are a bunch of nice-sized lots with custom homes that have large setbacks and plenty of room, et cetera, and clearly over the one-acre limitation. And I started thinking about, well, if they can have a rooster and I have to listen to the rooster, well, then, what are the, what's the balance aspect of this? Now, ostensibly, chickens are just birds, so as it turns out, there's a Malukin one block away that disturbs me a lot more than the rooster does, because the Malukin goes off between 5:00 in the morning and 11:00 in the morning, and it's a large bird, almost a nine-pound bird. So, I did some research, and I started thinking about dogs versus chickens and everything else, and I came up with some numbers based on some, some hard research. University of North Carolina reported in 2000, as quoted by Consumer Union's reports, indicates that a broiler chicken, which is between 2 and 1/2 and 3 and 1/2 pounds, puts out 11.6 pounds of total solid waste per year, as compared to, for example, the American Humane Society indicates that there's 58 million dogs that output an average of four pounds a day, which is 1,460 pounds of solid waste a year. And when you look at environmental impact, which I was, this is the first council meeting for me, I was really excited to hear environment coming up every twist and turn in terms of landfill water quality, et cetera. Morro Bay is a community in California on the mid-coast, and they did an isolated research based on DNA ribotyping, which is where you can take DNA and understand very specifically what kind of species of the animal, and they're looking at E. coli impact on their native fisheries. According to that research, 9% of the E. coli bacteria found in the, in the bottom of Morro Bay was from domestic dogs, 24% was from birds, but less than 1% from what they call Cornish cross, which is the most common form of commercial white, heavy-bodied broiler chicken. So, that's, those are some shocking numbers to me, because I would have expected to be pretty much the reverse. But of course, there are a lot of pet dogs. Now, if we look at chickens, of course, as just another pet bird, what kind of restrictions are there now on people who own large birds? All that material goes in, goes in our dumps, one way or the other, of course, you know, Sunday newspapers and whatnot. So, I'm, to me, 11.6 pounds versus 1,460 pounds is a pretty shocking difference, and I can provide these links if you want to do any additional research. I personally grew up in Reseda, California, and we had over 200 chickens on an acre lot. Excuse me. I really just want to have one or two, literally three chickens. That's, that's the level of my interest. I know that my girlfriend's children or my girlfriend are not going to take care of them, I know it's my job, but I also try to be environmentally sensitive. I don't want any animals that are going to create any output that I don't personally want to deal with, and I have some raised beds, and I know where that output, once it's ready, is going to go. So, I'm excited to hear that there's at least consideration and friendly first-name-level debate about a subject that has gotten some people agitated, apparently because it is just a bird, right? Just a pet bird. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Gregory. Thanks for your patience.
I'm sorry about that.
We will need your name and address for the record, please.
My name's John Shields. I'm a petroleum geologist. My address is 411 West Waterloo Road, that's in Edmund, 73025. And Bruce, I'm here, I'd like to ask the help of the council. In 2009, during a study of some disposal wells near and on Wiley Post Airport, a review of the files at the Oil and Gas Inspector's Office revealed that there were several items missing from those files. Those were the requirements for a study to be done to determine if the, if there were any wells within a one-mile radius that might pose a threat to the groundwater. And these are wells that are described as problem wells, they're wells that are generally older wells that have insufficient surface casing or were plugged improperly. In September, we sent a letter to the operator of those wells and to the municipal councillor's office and to the Oil and Gas Inspector's, asking for an explanation and/or a meeting to find out what had happened here. Excuse me, on October 21st, we had a meeting with the municipal councillor and with the Oil and Gas Inspector at the Oil and Gas Inspector's Office at 420 West Main, and we were given as the reason for these wells not being required to do this study is that the city of Oklahoma City was acting on a 1991 legal opinion. I think Mr. Jordan was actually, he might be familiar with it, it was 20 years ago, but he was part of the group of attorneys that wrote this opinion, and it simply stated, no, not simply stated, but it stated that they felt there might be a conflict in jurisdiction over saltwater disposal wells. And because of that, there are regulations by the Corporation Commission and the city. The city's regulations slightly exceed, in some cases, the Corporation Commission's, and they felt, they feared that the Corporation Commission, if this was challenged in court, might, the Corporation Commission might say that they have exclusive jurisdiction, and then the city would lose all control over even zoning disposal wells. And in that meeting, we were told by the, by Mr. Brummett with the municipal councillor's office that, note, there's never been any dispute that these regulations that are being violated are intact and they are valid. Mr. Brummett informed us that because of this legal opinion, that the city simply had decided not to enforce those regulations. There's never been a study done by either party that, to determine what the results of this might be. And these regulations were established in 1980 as a result of, by Oklahoma City, as a result of studies done that were sponsored by the EPA, which were intended to protect the groundwater and essentially show the reason that Oklahoma City needs to have certain regulations because of their, the unique geology and the unique ecology in Oklahoma City, that they need certain regulations that are in addition to the Corporation Commission regulations. Virtually every municipality in Oklahoma has regulations like this that are in addition to the Corporation Commission. The city regulations also say that if there's a conflict, that the more stringent regulations should be applied. And I left that meeting, I felt like that was, the city's hands were essentially tied at that time by this. I've asked the operator for an explanation, they, you know, the city has an explanation for a possible reason in that they fear that they might lose their regulations, but I don't know, I've been trying to find out why the operator has made a decision to drill these wells in violation of the regulations. They could have drilled more expensive wells that would have, would have complied with the city regulations, and I've never received any response from them. Approximately three weeks ago, I received a copy from my attorney who had been helping me on this, a copy of a recent judge's decision regarding disposal wells. It was for the city of I.A.N., and I've included all of these for your review, I've made nine copies of this. In that, an administrative law judge at the Corporation Commission has found that cities do have the right to enact and enforce their own regulations involving saltwater disposal wells, and that the matter of exclusive jurisdiction does not preclude cities from doing so. And I've sent this to the, to Mr. Brummett with the municipal councillor's office and asked that they re-look at this and maybe come up with a new updated opinion from the 1991 opinion to possibly enforce their regulations. I mean, I don't understand, I don't understand why the operator did this to start with, but I certainly don't understand now, with this information that you have, there's no reason, there's nothing stopping, in my opinion, Oklahoma City from enforcing these regulations.
Why don't you pass them out?
Okay.
We appreciate your bringing it to our attention. Nine's what we need. John, thanks for coming down.
Okay, the other thing is that the reason, again, the reason, if I have just a couple more seconds, the main reason for not at our meeting on October 21st is the, one of the reasons that the city hasn't done anything, the municipal councillor told me, and I asked if he had, if he would revisit this, and he said he had to be asked by, I believe, someone from the city council, and that's why I'm here. I just wish someone would ask, a request that the municipal councillor's office revisit this 1991 legal opinion, because if they would simply call, even the state's attorney general has cited on the sites of municipalities on this, if they'd just make one telephone call to the attorney general of the state of Oklahoma, this would be a moot point, and they would feel free to enforce those regulations. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Suzanne Grimes.
Mayor, I'd like to ask Kenny Jordan to follow up on that, if he needs a request from the council.
Okay. Suzanne, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, I'm Suzanne Grimes. I live at 6416 North Ann Arbor Terrace, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, Ward 1. I'm, the reason why I'm here today, I would like to approach the city council and the Honorable Mayor Mick Cornet of Oklahoma City in requesting that the monies for public transportation still continue due to people unable to come to the meetings and speak up, because if they leave their job, they no, they don't get paid for those hours that they're absent, and they possibly may lose the jobs that they do have. This is how important this busing and public transportation and also the MetroLink is for some people in our city. We, the public transportation helps the people that are providing services for our city, and therefore, most of them have minimum wage income, which is, you know, quite insignificant amount if you consider people that have cars, or maybe even more than one car, in families. And so, the public transportation does provide a much-needed service for several sectors of our city, such as people with minimum wage, the people that provide services and help our elderly, also our senior citizens who are on fixed incomes and disabled people. They are appreciative of this public transportation, and mothers that have low income that are trying to raise their children, get them to and from doctor's appointments, they use the bus system. I myself, I do not drive because of my vision, and I never have, and when I got a divorce, my husband went out of state, and I was grateful for the bus system to get my children to and from places. Anyway, sorry about that, but it's so important to people that are most of the time unable to approach the city council. And I feel like, on their behalf, I would like to try and keep that in mind when you all consider your budget for maintaining our public transportation, the busing system, and MetroLink, because this helps people get to and fro. And if we depend on our families or our friends, after a while, they get a little tired of us. And taking care of our children for anybody is the most important thing, and even though mine are grown and on their own, I still have this feeling that there's other people out there that need this person to speak up for them. And I would like you to realize how important public transportation is to Oklahoma City and many, many people. And this past year, I have definitely seen an increase on riders on any route that I have taken, and so I feel like our public transportation, MetroLink, and also COPTA is doing a very good job, and to have money and facilities taken away would be very hurtful for many people here in Oklahoma City area.
Thank you for coming down.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, council, and Mick Cornet.
Good morning.
I'd like to say congratulations for bringing in the National Basketball League. And my name is James Gates. I live at 2200 North Coal Train, Oklahoma City, and I spend every waking hour in this power chair, and MetroLink is my connection on Sundays. I get up at 8:00, you know, and transfer on to 3. I get up at eight o'clock and, you know, and transfer onto three MetroLink buses to get to church on Sunday morning. If I want to go to a ballgame, or a basketball game, or a baseball game, MetroLink is the only service that runs after 6:30 in the evening. It's very important, not only for just me, but anybody that's in one of these chairs. And I hope that the city council will reconsider cutting the funds for MetroLink, because we really need them.
James, thanks for coming down. Valoon? Okay, looks like we lost one.
Another sign up.
Okay. Walter Jacks?
Good morning, Mayor Cornet and council. It's been really some good discourse this morning on the issue of the chickens in the backyards. I really appreciate all of the comments that the council has made, a lot of wisdom there. One of the things that has made Oklahoma City, in my opinion, a really up-and-coming great city in the last several years, well, there are a lot of things. We've got a basketball team, we did maps, we got a beautiful downtown, we've got trails all over the city that allows us to bicycle everywhere, so many quality-of-life issues. And I think that one of the quality-of-life issues that really raises a city in rankings around the country anymore is how that city addresses sustainability. And this is a sustainability issue as well as anything else. So I offer my support to the young lady who spoke earlier, Sarah Braden, on the issue of the backyard chickens, but also with a temperament in respect of homeownership. There's been, there have been a lot of comments and concerns about people who pay good money, have nice houses, and they don't want chickens in their backyard. So I think Congresswoman Salier made some really great points, and Councilman Bowman, McAtee, and White as well. I mean, really good, really good points about, people make choices about where they live. And as a homeowner, I need to respect that, and I want other people to respect that of me as well. But I think that the issue needs to remain alive in some capacity and to be ultimately decided upon. I think that it needs to happen, that Oklahoma City supports chickens in the backyard as an issue of sustainability, like I said, but also with respect to the homeownership issues of the people in the surrounding areas. But thank you very, very much for the support of the issue this morning. I appreciate all of your comments.
Thanks for coming down. All right, anyone else here under citizens to be heard? All right, we have two items left, really. One is our executive session, and the other is our discussion regarding the police department's budget. Why don't we go ahead and have the police department present its budget before we do executive session, which will require us to recess the council meeting and convene as the finance committee? We're gonna do that now?
Can we continue that?
Good morning, mayor, members of council, city major. I'd like to take this opportunity this morning to present the police department's budget for fiscal year 11. Your budget book, you can find our budget on, starting on page 345 of your budget, budget book. I'd also like to take this opportunity to introduce Captain Clint Caswell. Clint Caswell is our planning, worked on the presentation, and we have Lieutenant Don Martin, who's actually running and flipping the charts for us this morning. We'll start with the mission statement of the Oklahoma City Police Department. The mission of the police department is to provide public safety services and promote a safe environment and lessen the fear of crime to the Oklahoma City community so they can experience an enhanced quality of life. This is unchanged for this year, we didn't make any changes to our mission statement. Next slide shows our proposed budget for 11. You can see the total budget for 2011 is $155 million, with the largest portion going to operations, obviously, where we have the majority of our personnel assigned to. This total budget is actually 5.76 percent less than last year. Next slide, please. The breakdown of our budget by source, you can see where the general fund is 63 percent, emergency management 5 percent, police sales tax 21, and map use tax 3 percent. Reviewing our leading-for results, the first issue in our leading-for results is the demand for police presence and services, coupled with the increased scope and complexity of police investigations continues to grow. This is an issue that was carried over from last year. Our strategy is to continue the use of general funds, sales tax fund, and grant funds for overtime programs to address high-crime areas, traffic enforcement, and increased presence in entertainment districts. Additional use of part-time employees are also being used for investigations. This primarily affects our sex offender registration, where we've hired part-time employees to actually address some of the needs in sex offender registration. Yes. The strategic result for that issue is by 2015, police presence and services will adequately increase while maintaining the level of course services citywide, as evidenced by, based on the surveys that we see feeling safe for visiting downtown. You can see our target for fiscal year 11 is 55 percent. The '09 survey showed 53 percent, people feel safe visiting downtown, which is an increase of about 13 percent over '08, so we actually gained some ground in that area. Feeling safe citywide, again, the target for 11 is set at 55 percent. Last year, the survey showed 60 percent, which was an increase over 47 percent the year before. Satisfied or very satisfied with the quality of police service citywide, our target is 72 percent. '09 survey was 71 percent, and the '08, which is an increase over the '08 survey, is 67 percent. I think if we keep at that rate, we might catch the fire department, maybe they'll feel better about us than the fire department if we keep increasing that. Continuing that strategic result, percentage of priority-one calls shows our fiscal year target of 90 percent, and our percent of priority-one calls respond to within the time expected, which is a total of about nine minutes and 30 seconds overall from the time dispatch gets the call to the time the officer arrives on the scene. We increased our target last year to 90 percent, our actual is 73 percent, which is pretty consistent with what it's been since we started the leading-for results process, you know, six or so years ago. So that's stayed fairly consistent.
Excuse me, chief, how do you, what is your strategy to move from 73 percent to 90 percent?
90 percent, after we did our staffing study, 90 percent was based on the results of the staffing study and what our percentage actually should be in responding to calls in nine minutes and 30 seconds. We would like to be, we should be able to achieve on priority-one calls, which are life-threatening calls, we should be able to get to those calls based on the study that we had done on our staffing levels, 90 percent of the time in nine minutes and 30 seconds.
Okay, but you have that as your fiscal 11 target, 90 percent?
Yes, we had it for, we had it as a target also for fiscal year 10.
And you got 73 percent?
Our actual, what we're doing is actually 73 percent.
You have a strategy in mind, absent what the staffing study might have suggested, to move from 73 percent to 90 percent in the upcoming fiscal year?
The only strategy, the only way you're gonna get there is by adding people, adding personnel. That's the only way you're gonna get to that target. We won't reach that without adding additional officers.
And do you anticipate adding additional officers in fiscal year 11?
Well, we're hoping for, no, not by fiscal, not by fiscal year 11, but we're hoping by fiscal year 2015 we'll reach that. Because we're not, I can tell you right now, we probably, we'll not get any better than around 73 percent based on staffing levels right now, but...
Chief, did I hear you say, though, that the staffing study that was done a year ago or so indicated that with the current level of staffing, you could reach 90 percent?
No, we cannot.
Okay, I misunderstood.
The 90 percent is based on what, we, that should be a standard set by this city to respond to emergency calls in nine minutes and 30 seconds. That's reasonable. The 70 percent, we said originally, when we started leading for results, we set our percentage at 70 percent of the time, which was what we were doing. It was fairly arbitrary, because we said it at that point, that we, what we were actually doing, we were doing about 70 percent, which has been consistent over the last five years. That doesn't make it the right target. That doesn't make what we should be doing on priority-one calls. So based on that staffing study, what we really, what we should be doing, an accurate percentage would be 90 percent of the time, and we're not, we're not gonna achieve that based on the staffing levels we currently have.
All right, I misunderstood.
It seems like there's a difference between a wish and a target.
Do what?
There's a difference between a wish and a target. And the 90 percent for fiscal year 11 seems more like a wish than it does a target.
Well, it's something we should achieve for, whether we, you know, our philosophy is something we should work towards and try to achieve over the next, you know, five or six years, but, because we're not gonna do it. I mean, that's, you're right, I mean, it's, it's not really a wish, it's really a need.
I understand that, but it's different than a target.
Well...
To me, a target ought to be achievable, if it's realistic, and that just...
Okay.
Chief, if I could, just a question. When you're talking about staffing levels and the study that was done in the past dealing with the need for more officers, did that study also include a component that said we could get possibly more officers in the field if we changed the way that we scheduled the officers?
Correct. If our, if our staffing were such that it, the officers, the majority of our officers during peak times, which would be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, that percentage would go up. Now, it's not gonna go up, it's not gonna go up to 90 percent most likely, based on just making those types of changes, but yes, if you put, if you could change those hours, overlap days, where you had more officers at the peak times of calls for service, the percentage for priority-one calls should be able to go up.
Then we could see that 73 percent go up to 74, 75.
Yes, it should go up more, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Also, on the investigative clearance rates on person crimes, we have a comparison. Our LFR, what we're showing you is our, how we report crimes, which is our Uniform Crime Report, which is what you see in the first section, investigation clearings rates. For '08, which is the, you know, the latest statistics that are out right now, put out by the FBI, is at 45 percent for investigative clearance rates for person crimes. For '09, our Uniform Crime Reporting Clearance Rate, which is compared to other agencies nationwide, is 51 percent. So we're 6 percent higher than the average on clearance rate for person crimes. In investigative crimes with UCR, we're about 4 percent lower than the national average, which is 17 percent. And in our LFR, what we actually do is we track all crimes, because the Uniform Crime Report does not include every single crime that we investigate. We include, we include other crimes in that measurement. So for our LFR, for our target in fiscal year 11, our target is 67 percent, and right now, our actual is 64 percent, which is about 3 percent lower. And then in property crimes, it's 25 percent is our target, and our actual right now is 25 percent. But again, you have to remember, that's all crimes, that's not just the ones measured by the FBI and the UCR. The next issue is the city faces a continued trend of graffiti vandalism. This is a, this is a new issue for this year, it's the only new issue that we've put in. We actually removed drive-by, reduction of drive-bys. We did that for five years, we reduced them significantly, almost by 50, over 50 percent over that period, and we're gonna take, it's not to say we're not gonna measure it and still address it, we have to, but we feel like we pretty much run the limit on what we can do with drive-bys with the staffing level that we currently have to be able to dedicate to it. Right now, graffiti is a huge issue. There's several council members here, obviously, we've met on a regular basis, and we're doing some things in some focus zones and focus areas to address graffiti. Graffiti has kind of, over the last probably eight, nine months, has just kind of spiked, it's really increased significantly, and we're gonna do some things to address that. One of the strategies is to improve the tracking and investigation of graffiti through the increased use of technology and coordination with other city departments, agencies, neighborhoods, and community leaders. More aggressively, we will more aggressively address graffiti vandalism by reallocating resources for graffiti investigations. We're actually assigning, we have one person assigned to it full-time. He's put some things in place to be able to better track graffiti and the problems that we have in our, in our high areas that are being impacted the most. And we're also gonna add another full-time person, and then probably try to allocate a temporary assigned individual to that unit to try to deal with the explosion of graffiti throughout the city.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Is the, the tracking of graffiti, is it just based on the, and I say just based, but is the, the actual placement as far as a certain artwork or... but is the, the actual placement as far as a certain artwork or the tagging itself? I mean, is there a identity to the tagging or is it...
Yes, that's part of it. There's, there is identity to tagging, just like there's, you know, certain person writes, their handwriting's the same, tagging is the same, it's similar. They may change a style after a while, but the, you know, the importance to a tagger or somebody that, that does this on a regular basis is their identity. And so, they tag the same. So, yes, part of that tracking and part of the prosecution is the fact that that person has a specific tag that you can identify and attach to a single individual. So, if you identify the tagging, eventually identify the individual and the locations, we have to keep all that for the purpose of prosecution. And in many cases, we can file felony charges based on the fact that if they do it enough, then the amount of tagging and the vandalism is over $1,000, and we're able to file felony charges on that individual. Our strategic result is by 2012 is to increase the percentage of graffiti cases presented for prosecution by 100 percent. Year-to-date actual, we have, we have 14 cases that were presented for prosecution. It may seem low, but compared to this time last year, we may have had one or two. We've made some significant strides really within the last three or four months in identifying taggers and individuals that are committing most of the vandalism throughout the city and particularly in the, in one of our focus zones that we're, we're putting quite a bit of manpower and resources into. So, we're hoping, our target will be 28. My guess is it may be higher than that. We may be able to file more cases. In cases investigated fiscal year-to-date, we had 295, suspects arrested 14, cases submitted for prosecution 14, and individual charges filed 74. And you see a lot of cases, a lot of the graffiti is done by a small number of individuals. And so, 14 cases may not seem like many, but you may clear up, you know, hundreds and hundreds of cases based on, you know, one or two individuals. So, we're pretty, we're pretty excited about what we've done so far in some of the areas of Oklahoma City. The second, the second issue, police department issue is one that we've had for the last several years, five years, minority population growth and changing demographic, increase of demand for police officers with bilingual skills, and the need for police department to reflect the diversity of the community. Strategy would be to continue the recruiting campaign directed at qualified women and men of all ethnic and minority backgrounds and continue to increase bilingual training for police recruits. And our strategic result for that, for that issue is by 2011, the police department will improve workforce diversity among police officers by recruiting, selecting, and hiring the most qualified individuals through comprehensive and proactive recruiting strategy that provides an applicant pool as reflective of our, our city's diversity as evidenced by 30 percent of our applicants receive from minority, 30 percent of our applicants, applications received from minority applicants will be as a result of recruiting efforts. And you can see we're in fiscal year 10 to date, we're at about 27.3 percent. And keep in mind that this could greatly be affected by the fact if we do have to make some cuts and we don't have a recruit class, then we will not be actively aggressive, aggressively recruiting in the field. So, this may, obviously, may not apply depending on whether or not we're able to have a recruit school or not, or have the vacancies to have a recruit school. Sworn police demographics, you can see we're 84, almost 85 percent are Caucasian. We have 7.4 percent that are African-American, 4.6 percent are Hispanic. It's not, if you look at it directly in correlation with the demographics of Oklahoma City, the percentages of the minorities are about half of what overall you see in the city. But if you look at it in a way that, not the entire, say, if you have an African-American community of 15 something percent, that 15 percent wouldn't be all eligible. First off, right off the bat, they wouldn't all be 21 years of age. So, they're not eligible to be police officers. So, really based on, on the eligibility of a pool of about 15 percent, say African-American, a 7, 7.5 percent may be a lot closer than you think to being a fairly good number as far as a representation for the community. The next police department issue is there, there is an increased demand for advanced technology in law enforcement. Our strategy is continued implementation of intelligence-led policing by sharing information through state, local, and federal information systems. And you can see our strategic result is the police department will successfully adapt to the changes posed by the growing availability of advanced technology as evidenced by the following. By 2015, increased computer forensic examinations to 208. Our target for next year is 145, and our year-to-date actual is 97. We probably won't reach that target of 145 currently, but, well, it shows currently, but that's what we're going to achieve for is 145. By 2011, 100 percent of all DNA cases submitted will be analyzed. Right now, we're looking at actual of 97.5 percent. I think one of the things that's interesting about this, as, since July 1st of 2005, or 2009, I'm sorry, to date, the DNA cases analyzed, 97.5 percent of the 383 total cases submitted have been analyzed. And if you recall, probably a little over a year ago, we actually started training our officers in the field to take DNA samples if they feel like it is available on burglary cases, on property crime cases, and those are submitted. So, if we feel like there's a good DNA possibility even on, on property crimes, then we're taking, we're taking that evidence. And I don't know, in talking to a lot of other major cities, I don't know of any other major city at this time that actually has all their officers trained in taking those DNA samples on property cases. They do have some form of units that do that, but not, not every officer that's out there. As a result, we have 49 investigative cases that have been filed just based on DNA profile where a suspect was not identified. So, you don't have a name of a suspect, you have no idea who they are, you actually have identified 49 people as a result of that that have committed those property crimes. We're going to go into now some of the major budget changes. As you saw with the Office of Management and Budget in their presentation, you had an option one that reflected that there was going to be non-sworn positions that were cut. It's two positions from records. It shows that the Romanjer Center facility, which would, is being proposed to be cut, you'd be cutting one non-sworn position from that, from the cutting of that facility. Sworn negotiated compensation reductions would have to equal 3.2 million. So, those compensations would have to be negotiated, but with that in mind, there would then be an additional 20 sworn positions at a cost of 1.9 million. And that's your, that's the option one that was presented. The option two reflects sworn position cut of 22, non-sworn positions of four. That, that four includes the two records, the one from Romanjer, and then there'll be an additional position from our High Intensity Drug Trafficking Program that we're going to propose to cut also. The units, the total units that will be impacted are 14 units within the police department, and I'll go through each one of those units so you're clear of what those service, what those service levels, the reduction of service levels will mean to the community. The first program we're looking at that would be proposed to be cut would be one sergeant position from the Grave and ISafe Program. The Gun Resistance Program, Gun Resistance and Violence Education and the Internet Safety Programs are designed to teach children the dangers of guns, violence, and safe use of the Internet. This would result in the elimination, elimination of that unit of the programs which would currently, which currently serves approximately 1,000 students a year. So, that, that unit would actually completely be eliminated. The Derelict Vehicle Enforcement is the next, next unit. It consists of one sergeant position. This handles parking and traffic-related complaints from the Action Center as well as assisting with traffic investigations, training, and special events. Most of, most of the information that they get and work off of is actually complaints that come through the Action Center and that, and that sergeant responds to. This will eliminate the program and reduce the timeliness and consistency in responding to derelict vehicle complaints. That doesn't mean we won't respond to them, it's just that the officers in the field would get those calls and they would have to be worked in. They wouldn't be a priority with any specific officer. They'd have to be worked in with the officers in the field between calls.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Are these cars that are just abandoned on the side of the street or the highway?
It would be, it could be a car that doesn't, it's been sitting on the street that hadn't been tagged. It could be a car that has flat tires that's sitting on the street. It could be one that's actually just been abandoned and left there completely with no owner, those types of things. It could be a variety of things like that. And I'll give you an example of what, what this, what this sergeant, last year he took a total of 3,016 calls. About 1,800 of those calls were generated through the Action Center. He also took 1,000, about 1,200 parking citations were issued, so he also addresses parking complaints throughout the city. There were 142 derelict vehicles impounded and 12 stolen vehicles recovered. So, that person, you know, he also helps with maybe some accident investigations and other things if he's not on a derelict vehicle call. That's primarily his responsibility, is any vehicle that somebody says has been sitting out here forever and we don't know why.
Okay.
But Chief, with regard to stolen vehicles, we've got other officers that would be working those kinds of cases.
Right. And we couldn't, we can't ignore derelict vehicles. We'll still take those calls and just reduce the timeliness of being able to address those.
Chief, just, and I'll let you finish. All of these calls, do they have to be driven by complaints to the Action Center? I mean, if an officer's out in the field and observes a, a vehicle that is not properly tagged, is parked on the, on the street, or that vehicle may have been disabled to some degree, is it, I mean, that officer can go ahead and, he can address that issue then, right?
Yes, sir.
Without having to have received a call, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Chief, one question on the timeliness aspect of it.
Mm-hmm.
What kind of time increase are we looking?
You know, I really won't...
Can you make us an estimate at all?
I won't know that until we actually cut that position. I mean, it's his priority right now to respond to those derelict calls. So, if we don't have an officer that's, that's dedicated to that, say, for instance, an Action Center gets the call on a derelict vehicle, the Action Center will locate the division that vehicle is in, contact the division itself. The division will take that call, assign it out to officers within that division either, either through, through 911 or wait till the next shift and assign it to an officer during roll call during that shift to have them go check on that vehicle.
So, the time increase could be significant?
Could be. Could be a day. It could be they couldn't get to it till the following day. Just depends on what their, what their manpower level is that day and the number of calls The next, the next unit to be affected would be the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. It amounts to one lieutenant and two sergeant's positions that we would eliminate, that would basically eliminate that program. They manage the accreditation process to ensure compliance with CLEA standards. This will result in the forfeiture of our CLEA accreditation in 2013. We just recently became accredited. Accreditation lasts for three years. There's things we have to maintain on a yearly basis to maintain that, but it's, it's, we have those things in place, and we would have our accreditation for the next three years since we just became accredited. For the third year of that process, we probably would not apply for, for re-accreditation if these positions are eliminated. It's a significantly important program to the police department. The program really provides an independent review and verification that we are compliant with the policies and procedures and best practices recommended for professional law enforcement agencies. It's a huge benefit to us, but at the same time, it's not a, a unit that consists of first responders and that we couldn't do without if we have to cut our positions.
Chief, does it take three sworn officers to administer that? Could be administered by maybe one sworn officer and some...
Takes, it takes, it's going to take more than one sworn officer. I have to have a supervisor that oversees it, and that can be, that can be placed underneath planning. We've talked about doing that. If we don't have to, if I don't have to eliminate, or I have some funding or something to be able to put at least another sergeant in there, we may be able to, I'll just say may, be able to continue our accreditation. Because we have things in place. It took a significant amount of time to get to that point, but we do have things in place. You have to remember that one of those individuals within that unit do all of our staff inspections. In other words, we audit, every year we audit a certain percentage of our units. We go in, we have a, we have a, been having a captain go in, and we have somebody from, from the CLEA office go in and totally go through a unit to make sure that they're abiding by the policies and procedures that are put in place for that unit. So, we have an inspection of that unit, a certain number of those units every year, and it's very time-consuming. And so, I have to have one person to be able to do that. Now, whether or not, that one person could not keep up with CLEA and provide that function, that's just too much, that's too much work. We also, out of that unit, do a lot of, of work on lawsuits, providing reports, investigative information to provide to the municipal counselors and support them in the work that they have to do in defending any lawsuits that we may have. So, there's other things that they do besides CLEA that we may be able to have other individuals do, but a lot of it's just going to depend on the amount of work, you know, that we have between that time.
Beyond CLEA, these other aspects of their operations that we've talked about, will that, will they be transferred to somebody else, support to municipal counselor's office?
Right now, Planning and Research, Planning and Research Office, actually, it falls underneath the Planning and Research Captain in that office. It's a unit in and of itself out of the Planning and Research Unit underneath that captain. The one sergeant, plan is for the one sergeants that's left in CLEA will actually go into the Planning and Research and be supervised under, actually, it would be Lieutenant Don Martin here if we eliminate those positions. And, and for the next two years, his responsibility would be to actually keep up with, with our CLEA accreditation, the files. We have to, you have to make numerous files for certification and those types of things that have to be kept up with. And it's a, it's a, it would be a full-time job just for one person aside from all the other aspects and things that have to be done within that unit. So, there's a possibility some of those things can be dispersed. We just have to reevaluate maybe some other things that we do in Planning and Research and maybe cut back on some of those issues depending on what, what we prioritize.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
If this program is eliminated and the accreditation is not there for 2013, does the accreditation with CLEA, does it have a meaningful impact as it relates to the application for law enforcement grants?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Because CLEA is a separate, it's not a federal, it's not a federal program. It's a, it's a private program run by law enforcement, different members of law enforcement agencies, but it is not, it's not tied to any federal money or dollars.
So, Chief, could I, two kind of companion questions. We are newly certified by CLEA, so is this the...
Yes, this is our second. We were, we had been certified for three years. We just became certified. The certification lasts for three years.
Okay.
Then you have to go back through the process. They come back in and evaluate, you know, your records, your files, those things that you've had to maintain and policies and procedures of the police department, and it's ever-changing. You know, those best practices in law enforcement, I mean, if you, you stop progressing in that area, then you're getting behind, and it's ever-changing. And they, they make sure that you are continuing to, to evaluate your policies and procedures and making those changes accordingly.
Have you evaluated any of our peer cities or other cities around the country that have dropped their certification? Are you aware of others that have?
There's not, there's not very, and I can't remember, I don't know the exact number right now, but we're one of, we're probably, at the time, we became certified a little over three years ago, we were like only one of 10 major cities that were actually certified, that had gone through it and certified. There are a number of larger law enforcement agency, or smaller law enforcement agencies that have gone through the process, but it's, it's much more difficult for an agency our size because of the number of standards that you... because of the number of standards that you have to meet. And so there's a lot, I mean, I don't know how many, I'm sure there's more major cities now, there are some major cities that after being accredited for three to six years have dropped their accreditation, I just don't know what that number is.
So it speaks very highly to the department and the standards that we-
We're very proud of the fact that we are accredited and I can tell you, it's benefited the Police Department a great deal as far as some of the changes we have made and made us better.
And in theory, we could for some period of time maintain those standards to the best of our ability and potentially reapply.
Right. I mean, one thing that it benefits is if you're involved in a lawsuit, for example, use of force lawsuit or something, you have a, you have a separate entity that has come in and verified that you have the best practices, the best policies in place pertaining to, say, use of force, and they will come in and actually testify to the fact that you're accredited and you do have those best practices and policies in place.
Thank you.
The next, the next operation is the Rominger Center, consists of one non-sworn position and facility costs. The center provides space for general education development, English language classes, martial arts and other city county health programs. The closure of the facility will result in the relocation, reduction or elimination of some of these programs. The High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, or HIDA for the acronym, is a federally funded program that receives federal funds for the investigation of high-level narcotics violations. The elimination of one lieutenant and two sergeant positions that we have assigned to HIDA would go away, we have one non-sworn position that would also be eliminated. Even though it's a federally funded program, the salaries for these individuals are paid for out of the general fund, so it does impact the general fund, they just run their operation off of grant funding. They coordinate the Drug Enforcement Administration DEA on local narcotics-related investigations and like I said before, this will eliminate that unit, or our participation in that unit. The unit, most likely if they're able to get enough, because it's, HIDA is actually a combination of multiple agencies throughout Oklahoma City. We have the most people assigned to that and we actually have the person supervising it, which is our lieutenant. The unit, there's possibility the unit may not go away, that's just a decision that'll have to be made through DEA as to whether or not they'll be able to continue that without our involvement. So our involvement will go away, the unit may not. The next, next position is one sergeant's position in ATF, the Alcohol, Tobacco and Firearms Task Force. The position is assigned to ATF to coordinate local federal investigations with the Police Department. This will eliminate the department's participation in the task force and reduce federal investigations involving violent street gangs and illegal firearms. We actually have two individuals assigned to ATF, one is specifically assigned just to the investigations of gun charges, federal gun charges. The position that we're proposing has been longstanding participation with ATF and their task force that investigates, you know, federal offenses involving some of the same things where there are violent, where there are gun charges involving violent street gangs and so forth. So we would actually be eliminating one, that one position. We would still have one position that would be solely responsible for following up on gun charges, which is kind of a priority of ours right now, be able to follow up and do a better job of getting federal gun charges filed on people where it's appropriate.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
You're saying in this task force, there's two sergeant positions?
It's one sergeant position. The task force is actually just one sergeant position. I have two assigned to work with ATF right now. The one, this position's been a longstanding position. We have, we have a task force position at DEA historically with drug enforcement. We've had a task force position with ATF, one position that coordinates, works as liaison and coordinates between Oklahoma City Police Department and ATF in the investigation of gun charges.
How long has that been, how long has that position been in existence?
Since I was a young patrol officer, probably 30 years.
So as, as flagrant as this issue of firearms that exists in Oklahoma City and actually the state and the plague of drive-by and gunfire getting more and more in the hands of young people, a position that has been in existence for over obviously 25 years, I'm just having a problem where something has such a need of control for, why would it even be identified as one of the positions to be eliminated?
Well, one of the reasons is that I actually have two positions working with ATF. Since gun, since gun charges have been a priority, we recently, I recently took a position from Secret Service. I had two people assigned to Secret Service working white-collar crimes. I took one position from Secret Service and put them over to ATF because the gun charges and violent crimes associated with that are a priority and we are making that a priority. And we wanted to do a better job of identifying those guns that warranted felony, not felony, but federal gun charges. And those that did not get felony gun charges would go for felony charges within the state. So I have two people currently, I have one that I want to just dedicate it to firearms associated with violence, because the position that I'm cutting on the task force is not strictly dedicated to firearms. It's dedicated to some gang activity and that may be biker gangs or it may be, you know, our street gangs. I mean, my priority has been with the federal agencies to identify and address street gangs within Oklahoma City, not so much biker gangs. So they shifted a lot of that based on what our priorities are. But I still have two people over there, so if I have to cut somebody from a federal program at this point, I only have one person at Secret Service, I only have one person with the FBI, we used to have two, we have one with the JTTF, which is Joint Terrorism Task Force, and then I have one with DEA, and I essentially have two with ATF based on what we're currently doing. So the reduction of that, when I look at activity, the reduction of that's based on what I think provides the less activity for some of the priorities that we've set. And so since I still have one person that's dealing with, with those firearm charges, that, that's the, that's the federal agency that's going to take the hit, not the other ones. So that's, that's the reasoning behind it. That doesn't mean we're not going to still prioritize, you're absolutely right, prioritize those. That, the gang involvement, the violent crimes and guns are still a priority for the Oklahoma City Police Department.
Okay.
The next, next operation is the Information Desk. This would change in, actually eliminating three sergeant's position. These positions obviously work the Information Desk at Headquarters, they provide security for Headquarters, maintain impound records, processes city bail bond payments and provides assistance to the public. This will close the Information Desk and eliminate the processing of bonds between the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM, so the Information Desk will be closed for four hours during non-peak times. And during those times, I think the greatest impact is going to be that, I say greatest impact, it's not, it's not that significant, but probably the greatest impact is the bonds not being taken. You can see here where we're showing in calendar year 09, during that four-hour period of time, we took 89 bonds all year, which is only an average, if you average it out per day, it's .24 bonds per day or maybe one every three days. So you don't have a significant number of people coming in during that four-hour period for bonds, so those are the hours that we are, we are offering to change or make those changes so that we can reduce, reduce three sergeants off the Information Desk. Now adjusting, doing this, well, it requires to adjust the hours of the other officers on the Information Desk, which will require us to negotiate that with the FOP, because it will be a change in working conditions for the rest of the officers and they would have to agree to allow us to make those changes before I could actually implement that. So there is, there is still a factor there of having to negotiate the hourly changes of the current officers that we have on the Information Desk. It also means that the Headquarters building would basically be locked down between 2:00 and 4:00, currently it's open 24/7. Inmate Processing is the next operation that will be, is being recommended by eliminating two lieutenant positions. These positions are responsible for supervising sworn and non-sworn personnel who process inmates at the county jail. Would require adjustment of the current shifts and eliminate onsite jail supervision between 3:00 AM and 7:00 AM. Again, we're proposing not having a supervisor, a lieutenant supervisor position in the jail for four hours. We will have lieutenant supervisor positions the remainder of the time, the time throughout the day, it would be that four-hour period, which is the slowest period that we have where we would not have supervisors. Again, it would require us to change the hours and negotiate the change of hours of those lieutenants to be able to accommodate this change. The next unit to be affected would be the Mounted Patrol Unit. We're proposing to eliminate two sergeant's positions. That unit provides services for special events along the Oklahoma River between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM by utilizing horses, bicycles and utility vehicles. Elimination of the Mounted Patrol result in reduced patrols and response along the river by the remaining two sergeants. So there's four currently in Mounted Patrol, we would be eliminating two. We would be eliminating the horses altogether, we're down to a few horses now, but we would eliminate the Mounted Patrol Unit as it is right now, so there would not be horses. They'd be reassigned to another supervisor within Brick Town, to the river, but would be actually patrolling that with, with our utility vehicles that we currently have, either bicycles or utility vehicles, but they would be assigned to the river as they are now.
In the best of circumstances in our history of Mounted Patrol, how many in any one time did we have?
In mounted?
Mm-hmm.
You have two officers working a shift.
No, I mean in the best of times, best of budgets, best of years.
That's, that's, that's the most we've had.
Oh, most we've ever had.
The next unit to be effective would be the Drug Court Position. We have one sergeant currently assigned to that position. They, they work in collaboration with the District Attorney, law enforcement agencies and social services to provide alternative sentencing for drug offenders. We've been involved in that program since its inception, it's a, it's a really quality prevention program. Our position over there, representation, it was instrumental in helping develop that program and is still instrumental in the operation of it. On the average, the Drug Court Program monitors 625 participants annually. The loss of this position will eliminate the department's participation, it will not eliminate the program because there's too many other entities involved, but it will eliminate our participation in that program.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
The, the Drug Court Program, there's some, there's a, an officer that's assigned there on a regular basis while Drug Court is, is, is in session, is that right?
Well, not just in session, but also casework, they work with social services, the casework of the individuals, the follow-ups, the UAs, they don't, they're not there just during the court sessions. They actually help facilitate that program.
Right. And most of those, those different agencies are part of, while the program is in session also, but-
Yes.
But basically, the, the position has been a very valuable position for the success of the Drug Court Program, would you say?
I think our participation in the beginning was instrumental in the success of the program. I mean, it's one of those things that has to be accepted by law enforcement officers, the majority of their clients are coming from the Oklahoma City area, Oklahoma City Police Department. And the coordination and, you know, utilization of our officers, not just with the one that's assigned there, but her liaison with officers in the field, I say she, at the time was Vanessa, but it's recently changed, was, has been instrumental in that. I'm not sure that it's instrumental, absolutely necessary in the success of the program. I think it makes it a better program with our involvement and I think having a liaison with the officers that ultimately are the ones that arrest and the individuals that end up in Drug Court has a, has a huge benefit. They're going to have to find somebody to replace us if we, if we're not participating. Right now, I think County has one full-time deputy that's assigned to the program also and there's always, there's always that possibility they could assign another person to that. But, but because we are the largest agency and most of the participants come from arrests that our officers make, it's probably, it's probably a benefit having one there, I don't think it's necessarily crucial or critical to the program.
Chief, do you think eliminating this position would have a negative impact on the number of participants in the program?
No. Fleet Management, we're proposing to eliminate one sergeant position. Now, this position coordinates the purchase and installation of vehicles and equipment, he schedules maintenance, repairs and develops fleet replacement plans. This will require the transfer of duties to other personnel within the Police Department. K-9, we're proposing to eliminate the lieutenant's position that currently oversees our K-9 unit. That position also oversees the Mounted Patrol Unit and as I said before, the two remaining positions will be moved from that responsibility of that supervisor to another supervisor within Brick Town. We're proposing to eliminate that lieutenant that provides supervision for that, this will result in the supervision of the K-9 unit being reassigned. In most cases, the K-9 units are working in the divisions and have the oversight of supervisors within those divisions. There are some things like training and things that have to have some oversight by supervisor and we would obviously take those responsibilities and transfer them to another supervisor somewhere within the Police Department. We have some options, the final decision on that hasn't been made at this point. Our Drug Interdiction Unit, we're proposing the elimination of one lieutenant and two sergeant positions. This unit intercepts the transportation of narcotics and drug proceeds for bus stations, airport, excuse me, airports and post offices, et cetera. This will result in fewer arrests for the transportation of narcotics and seizures of drug proceeds. We currently have four, we currently have four sergeants assigned to those, investigators assigned in that unit that basically do all that type of interdiction work at the stations. Now, this isn't highway interdiction, this is strictly the interdiction for those transportation units like at the airport, airplanes, buses, those types of things. Two officers, we will reassign the two officers to a current supervisor in our special projects units that oversees narcotics investigations and it will, it probably will, just by the fact of reducing it by 50%, will reduce some of our narcotics investigation, seizure of narcotics and proceeds as a result of that. To what extent, I don't know at this point. In our Records Bureau, there's two non-sworn positions. The Police Department Report Clerks perform various duties including report, transcriptions, data entry and responding to requests for information from citizens, officers and outside agencies. This may reduce the overall efficiency of the unit and time of response to requests for information. These positions have been vacant for a while and we've been able to maintain our level of productivity up to this point, so those positions have been proposed to be cut. That concludes my presentation, are there any, any questions?
Chief, what's the average cost of a lieutenant and a sergeant?
The average, the average cost of the, I think the sergeant's positions that they average the budget on was 70,000, what was the exact, 70,417, and that was done also for the lieutenants. Basically those, that, that, that amount was used as an average for all, all law enforcement positions for this year's budget.
70,000 is their salary?
417, 70,417.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Chief?
Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we need to recess. Let me find my agenda. All right, we will adjourn the Finance Committee and reconvene as the council, and we're going to Executive Session.